You let me know when you're ready.
I will. We are almost there.
Okay, take your time.
All right, we are now live.
Okay. Pursuant to the recently adopted amendment to the Illinois Open Meetings Act, included in Public Act 101-0640, public bodies may, in certain circumstances, hold entirely virtual public meetings without a quorum physically present in any one location. Under authority granted to me on March 17th, 2020, I issued a declaration of emergency to address the health threat posed by the COVID-19 pandemic. On June 15th, 2020, I executed a written determination that, given the ongoing emergency associated with the COVID-19 pandemic, in-person meetings of the Board of Trustees and the Committee of the Whole are not practical or prudent. On February 5th, 2021, Governor Pritzker issued his most recent disaster proclamation, an executive order 2021-04. That declaration declared in-person attendance at public meetings of more than 10 people at the regular public meeting location to be infeasible in accordance with the Open Meetings Act as amended by Public Act 101-0640. In accordance with the above actions, I have also determined that in-person meetings of the Board of Trustees and the Committee of the Whole are not practical or prudent at this time and until further notice. Accordingly, this Committee of the Whole meeting is being conducted virtually with members participating through the Zoom webinar platform. Village Manager Corrali is in the Village Hall boardroom as required by the Open Meetings Act. Phil, may I have a roll call, please?
Certainly, Trustee Hallwax, Trustee Listener,
Here.
Trustee Miller,
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney, Trustee Rubin,
Here.
Trustee Vrie.
Here.
We have a quorum, President Levin.
Thank you. To help facilitate this meeting, I ask each participant to mute your lines if you are not speaking to help minimize background noise. Members of the public are muted and should remain muted during the meeting. First order, really the second order on our agenda, is public comment. In accordance with the supplemental rule the Board approved on April 16th, 2020, here is how public comment will be taken at this meeting. The email address and telephone number designated for public comment for this meeting were published with the meeting agenda. At this time, I will ask Assistant to the Village Manager, Jordan Lester, to read the public comments that were submitted prior to the meeting on non-agenda items. Public comments on agenda items will be read when that agenda item comes up on the agenda. If a member of the public would like to submit a public comment during the meeting, please email your comment to glencoeeting@villageofglencoe.org. Comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting. Written comments should be limited to 400 words. Assistant Lester, could you please read any public comments if there are any that were received before this meeting?
Yes, President Levin, we did receive one public comment. And tonight's public comment is from Resident Jay Schmeele. And his comments are as follows, it's in two parts. So the first part is, "Why should residents whose sidewalks were selectively not cleared of snow by the village in order to save a few thousand dollars now, vote to approve millions of dollars of bonds for projects like storm sewer improvements from which they will also not benefit? Maybe Glencoe should adopt an official village motto, quote, 'Services for some, higher taxes for all,' unquote." Then the second portion of Mr. Schmeele's comment is this. "How much staff time and taxpayer money did the village spend to produce and mail the glossy brochure touting the April 6 referendum? Governor Pritzker at least spent his own money to buy promotional materials in advertising for his fair tax proposal." Respectfully submitted, Jay Schmeele. President Levin, that was our only public comment this evening.
President Levin, if you'd permit me, I'd like to just respond, if possible, to Mr. Schmeele's second comment, which is a good question and a fair one, if now is appropriate for me to do so.
Certainly.
He, Mr. Schmeele does reference a valid point. There is state statute in the term of the Election Interference Prohibition Act, and specifically Section 25.1 of that statute limits the investment that any municipality may make in any materials related to a referendum that may be pending to $5,000. The cost of the mailer that was sent out to our residents early last week was $1,155.95. That was the cost for printing. Approximately $500 for postage of that. And while I don't have the exact staff time related to the input of or the creation of that document, we certainly can share that back with the Board and we can do so with Mr. Schmeele as well. But I believe we are well within the restrictions placed upon us by state statute.
Thank you. Our next order of business is review and discussion of the downtown business needs for the spring, summer, 2021, and beyond. And I would ask that Assistant Village Manager Sharon Tanner and Development Services Manager Taylor Baxter and Assistant to the Village Manager Jordan Lester present the information with respect to that item, please.
Thank you, President Levin. Just give me one moment, please, while I get our PowerPoint ready to go. And if someone can let me know when you see it on your screen, I would be very grateful.
Uh huh, I can see it on the screen, although I also see your whole full group of sides to the left, so you may want to, there you go.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you very much, trustees. As President Levin said, the Business Services Team is here to present to you and provide you an update on downtown business needs for the upcoming spring and summer months and ask for your feedback on some additional steps. Our Business Services Team is Assistant Village Manager Sharon Tanner, Development Services Manager Taylor Baxter, and then myself. So a little bit of background before we get into staff's recommendations and some questions for feedback. We are all aware that March 2021 marks the first year, the one-year anniversary of the start of the COVID-19 pandemic. And although all types of industries have been tremendously impacted by the pandemic, we know close to home that Glencoe small businesses and restaurants have been particularly affected throughout the past year. So keeping that in mind, the village, our village staff has been in continued contact with our small businesses to communicate COVID-19 updates, to offer support and to implement changes where we can and where feasible to support businesses or this community. And the Board has been a vital part of that as well. So just refresher examples of some of these changes that we've been able to implement are expanded outdoor dining options, which we'll be talking about a bit more in depth tonight. Temporary carryout curbside pickup spaces for our restaurants. Temporary alcoholic beverage regulations for our B1 and B2 liquor license holders. And then finally, liquor license installment payment plans. So as I mentioned, being a year into the pandemic, we wanted to get a better understanding of where businesses and restaurants are at at this point. So we also wanted to see how the village is doing in offering our support and what could be done further to continue that support. So in late February, the Business Services Team issued a COVID-19 business survey and a comprehensive summary of these results was included in tonight's agenda packet. We received 20 responses, which is great. Thank you to all of our businesses and restaurants that responded. We have some folks joining us tonight, too, so hello to you. And overall, we received mostly positive feedback about the village's efforts in the past year. Some items of note were our communications efforts, particularly about state, local, federal COVID-19 regulations, such as the Restore Illinois Plan Phase Changes and those impacts for each of our small business industries. Businesses said that they appreciated that the village had promoted their businesses throughout the year, had done some special promotions. There was a little teddy bear in the window, small business spotlights. Those are just a couple examples. And then we also did receive positive feedback about expanded dining options, particularly when our restaurants were not allowed to have indoor dining options for a majority of 2020. We also were able to get greater insight on the impacts of the pandemic on our businesses. Two items of note, and this is probably no surprise to anyone, there was a greater reliance upon online shopping, shopping carts and marketing, as well as curbside pickup for our retailers, restaurants, and anyone else that was not able to offer indoor services. But tonight, we wanted to focus on two particular areas that were addressed in the survey. Modifications to the expanded outdoor dining options that were offered in the past, and particularly as we look forward to the spring and summer months, and then downtown parking in general. So first, I will start with outdoor dining. So in addition to some of the general questions we had asked in the survey, our Business Services Team reached out to all of our downtown restaurants that offered dine-in service. So we have an Apple a Day, Meg's Cafe, Food Stuff's, Guild Hall, Hometown Coffee and Juice, Little Red Hen, Starbucks in Valor. Shanghai Gardens does not offer dine-in service, they're carryout only, so they were not included as part of this list. And based on the feedback we received, tonight we are seeking your feedback on what we are recommending, which is an individualized approach for each restaurant, based on their business model, their physical location, and their individual needs. So just as another refresher, too, and the Board was huge part of this, throughout the past year, the village has offered a variety of expanded outdoor dining options, just based on our review process and approval. So the village has permitted our expanded sidewalk seating, which are our normal tables and chairs, which we do offer. Outdoor seating on non-COVID years as well generally starts from April 1st, November 30th. The village worked through our auxiliary outdoor seating area, or OSA, in our Village Court parking lot during the summer. And Valor was able to utilize a tent. And then last but not least, some of our cold weather dining options that Guild Hall and Hometown were able to have during the winter, ingles and greenhouses. In addition to these, the village was also able to offer temporary curbside carryout parking spaces that restaurants, you may have seen the orange little standees that we have in parking lots and on the sidewalk for restaurants to use during their busy times of day. So here are the recommendations that we are making and looking for the Board feedback based on each individual restaurant. So an Apple a Day, Food Stuff's, Little Red Hen, and Starbucks all indicated interest in continuing to have expanded sidewalk seating. So as the Board may recall, there are some state requirements that specify the distance between tables and chairs and six foot, I can't speak to if there are any changes in today's recent announcements by the Governor. But all of those restaurants were wanting to have sidewalk seating. Staff does not have any concerns with with expanding sidewalk seating. We've had a lot of positive feedback on that. And as I mentioned just a few moments ago, this is just an extension of the annual sidewalk seating program that we have each year. Starts April 1st through November 30th. It's a free permitting process that staff requires restaurants to provide a schematic layout of where their tables and chairs, and if they choose to have heaters, are located on the public sidewalk. And we have an inspector come out and it's a hopefully pretty seamless process for them. Moving into our more individualized requests, we have Guild Hall, Hometown Coffee and Juice, and Valor. And like I said, I think we have some folks from those restaurants joining us tonight. So if the Board has any specific questions, they may be available for that. So here is just an overview of these three restaurants. If we want to orient ourselves, if you can see my mouse, here's Park Avenue up at the top. And here is Vernon Avenue. Hometown Coffee and Juice is here. Guild Hall is here. And Valor Restaurant is here, down in blue. Here's Village Court as well. And this is Village Court Parking Lot, excuse me. And here is Village Court, the roadway.
Hey, Jordan, real quick, could you go back?
Yes, of course.
So the blue where Valor is, that's a proposed tent, right?
Correct, so I don't want to spoil.
By the 10, 8, 7, 6, is that the entrance to that? I can't remember. I'm just trying to figure out, the tent gets in the way of cars going in and out.
So that is a great question. Are you talking about this one right here?
You got it exactly right there.
So this is the Vernon Avenue entrance exit of the Village Court Parking Lot. And we will go into that in just a couple minutes.
Sorry to jump the shark.
Don't apologize, that's a great question, but I hope that will answer your question then. If not, say, hey, I have a question, if that's all right. If anyone else has any questions, just let me know. All right, so first we have Guild Hall Restaurants. To orient ourselves, here is just the restaurant's physical location here on Vernon Avenue. So Guild Hall has proposed to continue first their expanded sidewalk seating. Guild Hall, you will note in yellow, has been utilized, some tables, chairs, right in front of their physical storefront right here. And then all the way down by the bank as well. Guild Hall is also proposing to continue their greenhouse configuration right here. You'll know that there's also currently a concrete barrier that is there. They're wanting to continue to use the greenhouses, not only through spring, but through summertime as well. And then last but not least, Guild Hall is also wanting to and has found successful their carryout parking spaces right here on Vernon Avenue as well.
Or if the note on that carryout parking, that's only in use during the dinner hour, is that correct?
Correct. So we're looking for Board feedback on the continuation of the greenhouses in particular to the spring and summer months. You may recall that for both Guild Hall and Hometown, because this is on public property, both of the restaurants do have a license agreement with the village for use of that space. And if the Board is amenable to that continued use, we'd want to work closely with Guild Hall and neighboring businesses to determine what that possible impact might be for that continued use. Guild Hall has indicated that they have spoken to Reach Yoga, which is the business. Immediately, I think they're right right in here about the use and that they are in support of that that continuing, and they have found that it's been successful for them as well. So Sharon or Taylor, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, or if the Board has any questions about Guild Hall's requests for spring or summer. Now might be a good time for that.
I would comment that I've had a number of residents talk to me about how much they like the greenhouses because they're still a little weary, even though we're getting much better about eating inside of a regular restaurant net. And so they like having that as an alternative that they can have, where they can go with up to six members of their family that live with them and have one of those greenhouses to eat with. And so I suspect as a service for our residents that they would appreciate our letting Guild Hall continue to do that through the summer period and that as we slowly get over this whole problem of COVID.
Can we just fire away with comments, or are we?
Sure, if you have any comments now is your time, we would love to hear any feedback that you have.
Just from my perspective, I mean, I'm in favor of trying to do whatever we can to keep people, you know, comfortable dining and also as long as reach and some of the other businesses are complaining about it, I'm in favor. My only question would be, the greenhouse is in the middle of summer, wouldn't it sort of be like sitting in a parked car? I mean, how do they keep them cool?
So we have, we have sort of talked with Guild Hall about that. And again, I do think that Guild Hall folks.
They are present, we may want to see if they can respond to that question.
Yes, I might have to stop sharing my screen. Oh, one second. President Levin, if you are okay with it, I would like to allow several folks from Guild Hall, okay, one second. So we have Jerry Muldoon, Jeff Shapik, and Jennifer Littlewetson. If there's anyone else, please let me know so I can get you here, too. So one second.
While we're waiting in the audience that would like to comment beyond Guild Hall, that would be beneficial as well.
Hello, Peter.
Hello.
Okay, so Jeff, Jennifer, and Jerry, you should be able to turn on your audio right now.
Hey, Jordan, it's Jeff Shapak.
Hi, Jeff.
Am I able to respond to that question now?
Yes.
Great, it's Jeff Shapak speaking on behalf of the ownership team at Guild Hall and management team at Guild Hall. And I'd like to respond to the question about the summer and greenhouses. We too have thought through all of that or have been discussing it. And we are currently looking at options whereby we can continue to meet both the needs and comfort of guests who want to be able to eat in no larger than parties of six. And with the greenhouses having the plexi glass, giving people the ability to have their own private spaces, but also no different than we put heat inside of the space in the wintertime to figure out a way to be able to put either fans or air inside of those spaces in addition to our ability to remove some of the plexiglass on the upper portions above the door on both sides, as well as put in venting. And then lastly, using a vinyl adhesive to the ceiling. There are six panels that create the A-frame and using a vinyl in order to be able to deflect some of the heat coming from the sun by darkening that experience or darkening the plexi in order to make the experience much more pleasurable. So that's all stuff we've been working on for the last couple of weeks. And we think that in the near term, obviously, it's still too cold to test anything right now. But in the near term, that we can figure out exactly how to handle that situation and continue to provide a very hospitable experience for our guests.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'll go. Well, I think that pandemic or no, we love to be able to help businesses do creative things to engage their customers. And so if this is working for people, and as far as I can see, it certainly is, I want to continue it, and I just do want to restate the caveat that's been stated before, which is to make sure that neighboring businesses are comfortable with it, given the fact that, you know, that there may start to be, you know, more foot traffic in the summer, more car traffic, more people are getting vaccinated. So I just, I think we're going to have more crowds. And I don't know how that might change things. But as long as our staff and the businesses are on to that issue, I'm thrilled with it.
Gail, any thoughts or comments?
Well, I too am in favor of it. I know how successful it's been, and I think anything that activates the streetscape, you know, also is a benefit to the entire community besides obviously beneficial to the restaurant. So I would absolutely be in favor of continuing their plan.
Thank you. Peter, any further thoughts? Your mic is muted.
I agree that we want to promote business, of course. I had and so sure, and I think solving the issue of the heat in the summertime is probably quite doable. And I do have a little concern about sidewalk seating and carryout parking. I know that's not what you're asking feedback on, but carryout parking actually, I think, looks like I would have no issue with. But sometimes I get worried about the sidewalk seating. It does get crowded and I don't know what the reaction is on other businesses. But that can be a little bit restrictive in that sidewalk space. So I have some, but minor, concern about that. I know it seems to be working reasonably well. But if there, have we received complaints about that? Or do we have enough history with the sidewalk seating extension? That that's remains a good viable option.
So that's a great question, Trustee Mulvaney. For all of the expanded dining on the sidewalk, I do believe that each of our, we ask our restaurants if they have permission from the neighboring businesses. I know that previously that Guild Hall has spoken with the bank. And I believe Hometown as well has spoken to their neighbors at Advanced Dermatology and Skinfo as well. I will say, just to make a quick note, that we have not received any complaints about Guild Hall's greenhouses as of yet, but the point is certainly well taken. You know, I mentioned earlier that we do have some requirements from the state in terms of distance between tables and chairs, but we also don't want it to be crowded. We do have ADA requirements that the village has to maintain from building to the edge of the furniture as well. So we can certainly take an extra look at that as we come into the sidewalk season.
Cool, and then my last question is the parking lots. You mentioned there's a permit involved. Is there a fee associated with the permit for the use of the three or four parking spaces?
For the licensing agreement, no, I don't believe that the village has charged any fee for that in particular. And there's no fee for the sidewalk for any business either. It's just the permit process.
Trustee Mulvaney, I'll just add to that, that as staff was working through this early on, we determined not to recommend to the Board that there be fees attached to the use of this public property, at least during the course of the pandemic. I think once we get past COVID, if there are if there are components of this that may stay, I think we may re-approach that. But generally, from the standpoint of not wanting to impose further issues on our struggling businesses, that we did not recommend that there be fees associated at this time.
Right, okay. So I assume that certification process has some timeline. And at that point, we could reconsider it. I don't feel strongly really one way or the other, but there will be a time point where I think we should reopen that dialogue about using the public right of way for a specific business.
Thank you.
In terms of fees, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Gary, any thoughts or comments?
I'm actually pretty much in agreement with my colleagues, including as to the principal caveat of making sure that the other businesses are okay with the arrangement. It seems like they have been and hopefully will continue to be. And Peter's point is also very good that now is not the time, but when we're really have COVID in the rearview mirror, God willing. People are out about pretty much back to normal. And that might be the time to think about extended use of the side of the public way. If there's anything to be done there or not, I don't know what the answer will be and I'm not presupposing an answer, but it's a valid question. But I'm very much in favor of continuing to do whatever we can to continue to help our struggling businesses in Glencoe and to keep them around. They they're they're a critical element of what makes our town our town.
Thank you. Jonathan, any thoughts?
No, I'm like I said, I'm in favor of it. Doesn't require too much, just so you can keep those things. No, I'm totally in favor of trying to help and as long as surrounding businesses are fine, so am I.
Thank you. Okay, anything further on this, Jordan?
I think we have some pretty good feedback. Thank you very much. And and I'll just say one concluding thing. I mean, also thank you to Guild Hall folks that are here with us is that we certainly want to make sure that all businesses are are feeling like we're trying to help all of them, not just a select few. We certainly, the intent is not to help just some and then hurt some of the other ones. So it's the points well well taken again that we want to get feedback from all all of our downtown business community. So I will just, unless Jeff, Jennifer, Jerry have anything else to say, I will put you back. One second.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. Thank you for participating.
Okay, can you still see my PowerPoint slides?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So the next restaurant that we have is Hometown Coffee and Juice and we do have, I believe that's Lou Rubin, owner Lou Rubin here in attendance as well. So just to orient ourselves, here we have Hometown Coffee and Juice, 700 Vernon Avenue. Vernon is right here and then Park is right here. So Hometown has proposed that they actually want to take down most of their greenhouse structures with the exception of two. You'll note here on our our slide that the final location is to be determined. We'd like to have some further conversations with with Guild Hall or not, excuse me, with Hometown regarding those spaces, but the intent is that they would like to convert their two of their existing greenhouse structures and make it for so they could sell shaved ice out of out of those locations. So they also, my apologies. So let me see if Lou, if the board permits Lou being able to to speak as well, if you have any questions. We'd certainly want to make sure, kind of as we had had discussed. I would be remiss in saying that they also want to continue their regular sidewalk tables and chairs. We'd want to make sure that we would avoid crowding, make sure we have appropriate space in between all of the furniture. So one second. You should be able to speak.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi there. Um, do you want me to just explain what we're proposing or do you have a question?
Yeah, if you wanted to give an overview.
Um, the idea is to take a greenhouse and modify it, so it'd be a little bit larger size, whether you take two and combine it to a bigger one. They're pretty modular and have it be used as a kiosk that could be able to serve, in this case, the shaved ice. Most of you are aware of the business that my son did several years ago called Mr. Chill. It was a big success. Frankly, I'm not sure I would have done this business without that experience. And so the idea is to take advantage of the fact that those greenhouses are there and just allow a fun thing for the summer for people to enjoy. The location is proposed in front of the shop there, which would actually work. Also, we have permission where currently houses number one and two, which would be down by the dermo office. They were sort of happy to have it on their end of the sidewalk as well, which might make sense because there's more room to spread people around. If it's in that area, similar to the way that Jeff described what they could do for their greenhouse. We would put some form of air conditioning in there and just have the basic essentials, obviously get approved by the health department like we did before. And that is the idea. We would not intend to sell other things through there or to serve out of there, anything beyond the shaved ice.
Thank you, Lou. I'll just add to that, that if the board is wanting to move forward with Lou and Hometown's idea for the summer, we would recommend having this on a pilot basis. Currently, the village zoning code does not have regulations in place for this type of of structure. We'd want to see how it goes, see what what feedback we receive and then reevaluate after the summer or whatever duration of time the board is is willing to allow this to take place to see what possible zoning code modifications we may want to look at or not, depending on how the program goes.
One other point that I'd make for the benefit of the conversation. As we would work with Lou Rubin on a final location for where these would be. This this single or double greenhouse would be located. We want to be conscious of queuing space for lines. Folks that may be waiting at that location in addition to those that may be sitting and or waiting in line at the the pickup windows. You know, the there is some question and Lou, perhaps you can address this, you know, the the governor's office has issued some guidance relative to returning to normal, if you will, and it may depend, some of that may be less of an issue if there's indoor, if you intend to reopen indoors this summer or not. But I do think that's one aspect of this that we 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 will want to work through that final location to make sure that we don't have conflicts between people trying to traverse the sidewalk to get to one of the other businesses or just to get through downtown and the tables and lines that may be caused from that.
Do you want me to respond to that, Bill?
Sure, if you'd like.
Um, sure, thank you. The so as far as location goes, one location, if you look on the screen, that would be good, probably good to address some of your concerns would be more north. So we're in front of the dermo office between those two trees right there. That would be one suggestion. The other thing is we would probably incorporate our app so that people can order in a more efficient way and maybe not have a line. So we've thought through that there's a better process we could probably come up with instead of having a bunch of people in line to mitigate that a bit. The inside, I don't have any immediate plans open. There's a point where we'll have to open the inside. There's some projects working on in the inside that would be a good time to to do now. Which would delay us wanting to open. We're fortunate that patio is there and people have been very much willing to use it. And so if the governor would open everything up, yes, there's a point absolutely going to open, but I still feel like the whole idea always from my point of view is just to create an experience. The goal always from day one has been create a good experience for the community and people will come. So the mural, the tables, the heat lamps, the the greenhouses, which obviously were a big success, are all part of that. So I'm not sure that it's an indoor outdoor thing. But it's indoors, we're all, it would be the, you know, one or the other.
All right, Joe, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, no, I think it sounds like a fantastic idea, fully support it. And if 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 Hometown is able to, you know, be able to order it with an app and you have people like my kids that could order it quickly, not have to wait in line, pay cash, I think you're going to be very successful and I think it would be great for the community. So I think like, just like the previous. You know, like everybody said previously that, you know, we just have to keep an eye on things and in case there's complaints, we deal with them. So it's dynamic, but beyond that, I think it's fantastic.
Gail?
No, it it sounds like you're already thinking of potential problems and and coming up with solutions to those things. So I think it sounds like a well thought out plan and certainly it's it's been a great asset to Glencoe. So I'd be in favor of continuing with this plan.
Barbara Miller, any thoughts or comments?
Uh, nothing, nothing new to say. Just thank you for this this hometown experience, Lou, and I I like the way that you're thinking and anticipating the potential problems. So thanks.
Peter Mulvaney, any questions, thoughts, comments?
Just, I want to encourage staff to remain flexible and work with the businesses here with these creative ideas. I think it's great. I keep thinking that further, the further north, the better in this case, or those two parking spaces down on Park look like, I don't know, my keeps going there thinking. And Lou, of those two parking spaces, you could perhaps locate there. It seems like a reasonable spot, but the point being be flexible and and let's work with these guys to make it a success. Thanks.
Thank you. Gary Rubin, any thoughts or comments?
No, once again, I agree with my colleagues. I think this is an excellent proposal. Thank you. Bringing this up, including the proposal to have the shaved ice. I I too think that will be great in terms of adding to the experience of being in downtown Glencoe. I think it'd be great amount of it.
Thank you. Jonathan Breen, any questions or thoughts?
No, I'm I'm in favor of it. I think it's it's been nice to have all this stuff, so so we want to continue.
Excellent. And listening to Lou's initial comment when we were talking about the shaved ice, all of us want to make sure that you tell your son how glad we are that he got you involved and got you to do all this.
Thank you.
One thing before we move off from this one, I just want to point out, we would not anticipate that we would remove the possibility of Hometown utilizing certain parking spaces again for curbside pickup. We have gotten a few complaints about it. I think Lou has been able to manage it pretty well and his staff team has added and removed curbside spaces depending upon need during the course of the day. So I would, I would consider that we would continue to accommodate that as well.
Absolutely.
Yes. Well, thank you, trustees. And and Lou, unless you have something else to say, I'm going to put you back in our inner audience.
No, thank you, everybody. I truly appreciate your support and and thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Lou. All right. And certainly, last but not least, we have Valor Restaurant. I'm just going to see if we have any folks from Valor that are joining us this evening. Does not look like it, but if anyone joins, please, please stop me and let me know. So we are recommending for for Valer's individualized approach is wanting to to make a tent possible. We have heard from Valor that the the tent in the 2020 auxiliary seating area in the Village Court parking lot was vital to to keeping Valor open and operating through the toughest months of the pandemic. And they've asked us to to please consider that again. I will say that we're also trying to incorporate some of the feedback that we received from surrounding businesses, particularly those around the Village Court parking lot, while we've heard from the Chamber of Commerce as well as in the COVID-19 business survey that perhaps the configuration that we had last year where the village shut the entire, well, excuse me, shut shut this portion of the Village Court parking lot completely to traffic and had a very large tent, we reconfigure that for for 2021. So I'm going to go to my next slide here. So we are recommending that that and if the board is amenable, we have a 20 by 30 foot tent right here. And then this is a rough not to scale drawing, but just for visual purposes. So keep that in mind. So there is, I think, six parking spaces right here in the Vernon, the the Village Court parking lot, where we are recommending that this tent could be. And then adding a little bit of a buffer zone for for the tent. If you saw it last year, we do need to have some barricades. In this case would be Jersey barricades, what we're recommending for safety of the folks that would be dining in the proposed tent. Making sure that it's it's very visible to the public that there is a tent there. And then they would also allow about 17 feet and I'll let Development Services Manager Taylor Baxter give you a little bit more technical information here. But the key with this mod proposed modification is that we do keep this open to traffic here. There'd be one lane of traffic. Taylor, if you want to take it from here.
Thanks, Jordan. Um, that, you know, this is an approximate location of of that tent. The tent there, that that box is about 20 by 30. It may end up needing to be pushed a little bit further away from the building to maintain, you know, a clear, clear use of that sidewalk there. You know, along with meeting Valer's needs for for service of that tent. That 17 feet is really, I I think that the it could be anywhere between about 12 to 17 feet there. Which is is we'll see in a moment would be sufficient with with the barriers that would be needed there and and room for the tent for for one way exit only traffic flow. Last year, we had, we had a lot of feedback about about the tent. And and one of the main things that we heard was some frustration with people not being able to exit onto Vernon from from the parking lot there. Especially if they were up on the northern side of the parking lot and starting to exit towards Vernon, having to turn around or back out. You know, to to back up a little bit to go back out towards the east. So this arrangement where the where the tent would be, you know, no larger than about 20 by 30 and in that approximate location, again, with some little bit of wiggle room, most likely if if we'd move and move a bit to the to the north or the northeast there would give 12, 17 feet for exit only flow out of the out of the parking lot there. So if you're heading from the north up from, let's say, foodstuffs. You would be able to exit and turn turn right there. Most likely, you would not be able to turn left. We'd have to have some signage to say that if you're heading from the north, we would not allow you to turn to turn the left and it would be a right turn only there if that if the the width of the of the of the travel lane was no more than 17 feet, we wouldn't want two way traffic through there. If you were coming from the south side of the parking lot, that second area there, you'd be able to keep going straight out onto Vernon or turn north on up towards foodstuffs. So it would be, I think, an improvement over over last year, some of the some of the frustration we heard from some people about traffic movements in the parking lot. And if you're coming up from from the south there, you can see you could either turn right or turn left into that into that southern drive aisle. So again, this is, you know, it's it's a there's some flexibility in this. It's not a a set absolute location. This is an idea for for allowing a tent to to go back in this parking lot while improving traffic flow. And we know we would lose at least four parking spaces there. Just to the to the north of Valor. It may require the the loss of one or two more of those six, depending on how this is arranged at the end of the day. It could be something where it's, you know, only part of the day would be unavailable when if the tent was in use. Those are those are details that have yet to be worked out. And I do believe that the two spaces, the two end spaces to the north of the tent there, where you see the silver car and the red car, I do think there'd be most likely sufficient space to keep those operational as parking spaces. And we have heard requests from from other businesses in downtown to to maintain as much parking in that parking lot as we possibly can. That'll turn back over, Jordan.
Yeah, thank you, Taylor. And I'll just add just a couple more things, just as a note, this is private property right here. This is the the grand or DJs private parking lot. So we we don't have this is not an option for for many outdoor dining. We want to make sure that we we keep that open. Again, Taylor was was correct. We want to make sure that there is ample room for the use of the sidewalk. And then we're hoping that we can get some really good feedback from from you trustees this evening on this proposed modification because it is different than what was discussed last summer. And I don't know if we have a slide for this as well, but Valor has said in addition to the importance of the tent, they are also wanting to have their expanded sidewalk seating right here on this portion of Vernon Avenue. So with that, I would, we would love to hear your feedback.
Jordan, one other point I just want to make is a reminder more than anything. One of the reasons that the entirety of the parking lot, that that kind of east end, excuse me, west end of the parking lot was closed last year was because we thought there might be a more broad use of that space. Guild Hall at one point had indicated they may be interested in placing a tent in that parking lot. We were in some extended discussions with the house, which is also across the street, about how they might potentially use some of that space. And really, you know, the idea last summer was that the parking lot might be the central area that almost all of our restaurants in some way, shape or form might use. Obviously, that isn't what happened. That isn't how it worked out. And Valor ended up being the only user of that space. I think our intent here was to be mindful of of the complaints that we heard from some of the neighboring businesses in terms of the difficulties that they had with deliveries and such, but also to be responsive to Valor's desire to maintain a tent out there. And so I think that that really has been our intent here is to find a way to assist Valor with that, but also be responsive to the concerns that were out there from some of the businesses, particularly to the, to the north of this, of this screenshot that you've seen, you're seeing right here. So just wanted to add that.
Okay, Joe, any questions or thoughts?
So with this one, I would just caution that, you know, when you talk about a 20 by 30 tent, I mean, the 30 doesn't look like a problem. You could probably take all six spaces and it wouldn't be a big deal. But the further you go out on that 20, you could have issues. So I I guess I would just caution Valor to say that, you know, if they tell you it's going to be 20 by 30 tent and all of a sudden come, you know, May 1, the tent's 30 by 30 and they say oops, and then we're back here. You know, are we going to do? So I guess if we're going to do this, I would make sure that that part that's sticking out there, we agree that it's a certain number and that we we stick by it so that something strange doesn't happen when they get the actual tent that they put up versus what's proposed here.
Trustee Hallwax, if I could, at, that's a fair point. And I think maybe the feedback from the board tonight might be, are you comfortable with the concept of one-way traffic in this location? We can work with the restaurant to find a way to squeeze in the size of tent that they think they may need. But if you're comfortable with one-way traffic, that makes it easier for us to understand. If if there's a desire to maintain two traffic, that does limit the options a bit more. But if that's the disposition of the board on it, that's something we would be, we would be working with them on.
No, personally, I'm fine with one-way traffic. I just, I think that my bigger fear is that literally it's going to not have any traffic go through it more than just one way.
Okay, Gail, any thoughts?
So I'm just wondering, so has Valor seen this proposal from the village? At this point?
I can take that question, trustee listener. We've been in contact with them. We've, we've been working through internally some possible configurations. And if this is an option that you're amenable to, we'll review it with the Valor team. We have let them know that it very well may be the case that we need, that we're, that we can't close the Vernon Avenue entrance altogether and that we may need to keep at least one direction of traffic open. And so we would need to discuss the placement and the size of the tent. They did indicate to us that they wanted to have a 20 by 30 tent, which is the same size that they had last year. And again, we had made it very clear that we would need to talk through size and placement based on the board's direction.
Okay, my other question, just so looking to the east of the tent, because there is something shaded blue a little. Is that just a standard parking space?
Are you referring to this right here?
Yes.
It's not the highest quality image because we've zoomed in a little bit. This, these are parking spaces right here. This one, I think, might be vacant, but there's a car right here.
Those are parking spaces? So, and I don't know what standard sizes are for tents, but have we thought of an option of something longer and narrower so that it wouldn't be jutting out into traffic as much? Because it'd probably free up the, the exit lane a little better. Is, is that something that was considered or not?
Certainly a possibility. I think to some degree, we can bring that back to them and see what alternatives they may have in mind from that standpoint. I think probably the widest tent you could go with would be 12, maybe 15 feet. And then to maintain a bit of a buffer around it and keep two-way traffic. So that that's something we can go back to them with.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you necessarily will be able to get two-way traffic, but it just right now, it it looks like it could be very close. And anyway, it was just another option that is it possible to maybe go a little longer, a little narrower? And and obviously also to get their feedback. Because we obviously would would like to accommodate their wishes too. I don't have any other comments.
I I would add in that I think if possible, it would be good to maintain the two-way traffic, but we must have at least the exit there. I think that's based on last summer's learning important. And I wonder if it wouldn't be better to push the tent further to the east so as to make it easier for cars to handle going through that area so that that's a little wider and a little more open for them. So I would favor the tent structure to the east as far as possible. In other words, the two lanes to the east and opening up those last two lanes to allow a car more leeway when they go through there to see pedestrians and to make their turn.
And one thing I would say to that president of it is, is there a couple of issues that we would not want to create? One is the perception that a a car can drive eastbound into the, into the parking lot. We would, if we move that tent too far and it becomes a little bit invisible from the street, we may have some traffic conflicts there. And then there's also the concern of nearness to the door of the restaurant. And the further east we go, that may make it a little bit harder to serve food, but we will, we'll look at that with them to see what sort of alternatives we could, we could work out.
Right, and I would think we could use horses and signs to make it clear that you can't drive in there, but still give better view and better access for the cars that have to go, either coming from the north or from the east to go exit there. Because that looks to me like that can be a little tight. Anyhow, Barbara Miller, do you have any suggestions or questions?
Um, yes. I, I first want to verify that that what I'm seeing is correct. If there, so there are two entrances into the parking lot on the east from Tudor Court. If
From Village Court, excuse me.
From Village Court, I'm sorry, Village Court, thank you, Sharon. So if I, if I'm on Village Court and I enter the parking lot in the northerly one of those two, say I'm going to the dry cleaners or or foodstuffs, and I don't find a parking space there, I am then, Jordan, do you mind pulling back to the other?
Sure.
Just on, and then I just, to make sure I can follow through. And then I take a, a left to, so that I'm heading south. And what I really want to do, of course, is now I want to turn left because I want to find a parking space, but I can't. I'm going to have to exit and then go all the way around. And then hopefully I will have learned my lesson and I will enter the parking lot from the southerly of the two entrances off of Village Court. Am I, am I reading this correctly that that that's just how this would have to be?
Yeah, you are.
Okay. So I I don't know that that's the end of the world. And I I don't know that, I mean, I was sort of trying to play around in my head with the idea of both narrowing the tents to, you know, maybe 15 foot feet and, you know, moving it a little bit more to the east, whether we could not allow egress from, from there, but maybe allow a left turn for people who have suddenly found themselves having to leave the parking lot. That may not be possible, in which case, you know, I think people will just, you know, they'll get used to it, they'll learn. But I suspect there will be, you know, a little bit of frustration generated by that.
Trustee Miller, to your point, you know, I think the the question is whether or not there's a, there are other vehicles in the parking lot are going to impact what a driver thinks or or chooses to do. Because if there's stacking, for instance, heading westbound out of the parking lot, that, that situation you just described is really the only option. However, there are no cars that are stacking there. That driver may attempt that, that movement to to head eastbound in that more southern, I think it's what used to be Southway Court.
Right, yes.
And, and and attempt that traffic movement. So, yeah, I think we'd have to look at signage and and think a little bit about how to adjust the placement so that we, we don't necessarily encourage that traffic movement.
And we may have taken crap parts in how to configure it.
Yeah, and and, you know, clear signage for people. I mean, as I said, I think you would only probably make that mistake once or twice. And and it's not the end of the world, but I know that sometimes people, you know, feel that in a little town like Glencoe, they ought to be able to move around quickly. And that might not be a a quick thing on a busy day. Notwithstanding that, I I would like to do whatever we can to to help our businesses. And I I think this would be helpful to Valor. And, you know, I, let's, let's just do a good job with signage and and barricades. And, you know, I would, I would like to see this happen.
Thank you. Peter Mulvaney, any questions or thoughts?
Simply, I'm not too worried about the extra two spaces. I would suggest that we optimize those six spaces, whatever the configuration may be, but don't try and save a parking space or two. You know, let's consider that, that whole little section and figure out the right configuration. The other thing is the, just on the surface, without thinking it through at all, is it seems to me that's a better place to go in than out. If I'm going downtown, I would drive up Vernon or down Vernon and and think, oh, I need to park and turn into the parking lot as opposed to having an exit. But I suspect there's deeper thought than that that went into it. But logically, it seems to me a better place to turn into than out of and use the, the east side of the parking lot for exiting. But otherwise, no, totally in favor, whatever works. Again, I encourage staff to to just keep it flexible and and work with our store owners to make the best plan.
Mr. President, I just wanted to make a comment following up on trustee Mulvaney's comment, if I could, which is, after he said that, I realized that it would, that might solve my problem too.
Yes, would simplify it, the whole thing on the inside.
Right, right. So, yeah, because then if you're, if you're looking for parking, all you have to do is make that, you know, that left turn.
It does and it doesn't. And one of the things that's, why we considered it is because if you are headed westbound in what used to be Northway Court, you are a little bit, you can be constrained. Now, the the traffic movement eastbound can happen there. But one of the other issues was delivery vehicles coming to foodstuffs and the flower shop and some of those other, some of those other businesses on the, that are out of view here have their delivery trucks approach from Village Court, not from Vernon, because they, some of them can't make that, that turn off of Vernon and in to where Northway Court is. So it, your points are well taken. I think we can go back and look at some of the, the orientations on that, see if if the, the calculations can work. This is where Dave Mau really enjoys spending his time coming up with, with, you know, how how traffic flow could work best through there. But that was, that was our thinking behind it, just to give you a sense of why, why we proposed it this way.
Okay, that, yeah, I understand. I I didn't think about the trucks. I got it.
Well, notwithstanding the trucks, they may not be able to make that turn, but, you know, all the cars could. And and I think what, because that was what I was thinking about when I first saw this was, well, okay, greater minds than I had thought about this. Obviously, I thought a longer, so whatever works, works. I'm agreeing with with Barbara and Peter. But if you made this an end, first of all, for those that are unfamiliar with Glencoe and they're coming here to go to one of our shops or restaurants, more likely they're going to pull into that lot or want to pull into that lot off of Vernon. And otherwise, if they're unfamiliar with the situation, they're going to have to find their way around to the actual entrance on the opposite side. So I think it'd be more convenient for some, if not many, if we had it as an entrance, if we could do it safely. And secondly, people are going to have to be inconvenienced in some regard, depending upon which direction they're coming from. So six of one in terms of whether they're inconvenienced coming in or going out, would assume after they've eaten and are happy, going out might be the time to have them inconvenienced rather than coming in. But I do think it would also solve Barbara's, well, it would help address Barbara's issue of the further limitation of being able to circle around, shall we say, within the parking lot. If you've come in on the north side of it and you can circle around on the south and still grab the space, I would think.
All right, Jonathan?
So I I have a slightly different take on all of it. I'm very much in favor of doing a tent. I'm just curious, who who's complaining about cutting off that exit? Is it the other businesses because they are unable to make deliveries? Or is it people who are, you know, a little bit inconvenienced by needing an exit at parking lot on the east side versus the west side? Because to my mind, you know, to help the business, I think more people benefited by having more people allowed to eat outside last summer than who were inconvenienced by needing to drive around for parking. So I, you know, I don't think it needs to be open at all unless it's, i- i- it's really affecting the deliveries for the other businesses. And so that's my take. It's if it's, if it's preventing other businesses from being able to actually do what they need to do, then I'm in favor of this, whatever configuration you guys think works. If it's that there were complaints because you couldn't turn the way, the way you wanted to turn just for parking, it's not that big a deal. It's not a very big block. So I guess I'm curious, what were the complaints?
It was a little of both. So when the parking lot was closed off, if you were, if you were parking parking lot and you were in the north way, formerly Northway driveline, and you drove to the end and realized there was no parking, you had to back out in order to get out of the parking lot. So sometimes there were three-point turns into the loading zone behind foodstuffs to get out. Or people would back all the way east to Village Court to get out of the, the parking lot. There was no escape, if you will. So that was one issue. And another issue was that same action was having to take place with some of those delivery vehicles that were either forced to back in or back out from behind foodstuffs or or some of those other businesses over there.
So did we have any, any accidents or fender benders or anything as a result of that?
I don't think we do, we did, that I'm aware of. Guys, any, anybody know of any?
Not, not to our knowledge, no. And and trustee Rea, to add to manager Crowley's comments, we we did hear particularly from foodstuffs that they received feedback from some of their clients that it it did impact them wanting to come in even for something as that it, it did impact them wanting to come in even for something as, as quick as, as a pickup or getting their food. And, and some, some other businesses said that as well. They believe that the closure of, of Village Court on, on that side did impact some of their businesses. So this was, you know, this proposed modification and keeping at least one-way traffic open was hopefully trying to, to suit more businesses than, than.
Taking a right turn. How much are we improving? But, okay, I, I mean, if that, you know, I don't, like I said, like, I want to keep, try to keep all businesses happy. If we're inconvenienced, but it's not affecting business, that's one thing. If it's affecting business, really, and people are so inconvenienced by driving an extra half block, then, okay.
I, I have a question that follows on what Jonathan was saying. Have we given any thought, if you take to the, to the north, there's four spaces that are in the island, those four, and then there are four across from that. Have we looked at putting the tent in that area and thus being able to keep the traffic flow functioning in the lot in all directions? And while it's a little bit further away from Valor, it seems to me that that inconvenience for their customers to walk an extra five feet would still give us much better access within the parking lot.
I mean, servers walking through traffic may not be a great idea.
I, I don't think that's, that's going to work. I, I think it's part one, it's too far from the restaurant. And I think to Jonathan's point, servers crossing active traffic, traffic lanes is generally a bad idea in the dark or in the, in the light. I, I think if there are significant concerns that one-way traffic is not an easy way, is not an easy thing to achieve, and I don't know that it isn't, then we will work with them to find a way to squeeze a tent onto those existing six parking spaces. Dave Mau, just, just let me know, you know, we've, those, those parking spaces there are eighteen feet deep. We can work with that to try to place a tent that would limit incursion into those drivelines as much as possible and perhaps keep them both open. I think one other issue with moving eastbound traffic, so an entrance off of Vernon is that you're pushing people, you're pushing, you're pushing cars into the wrong lane that are entering the parking lot. They're, they're now in the opposing traffic lane. And if there are people not paying attention, we now may have conflicts between vehicles that are traveling westbound in the westbound lanes and vehicles traveling eastbound in the westbound lanes coming off of Vernon. So I, I think we will need to, to sit with Valor and, and talk with them about what's possible in terms of, of a, of a tent size. But the more we talk, the more it seems like closing one lane of traffic doesn't seem like it's going to meet everybody's needs.
I would agree with that.
Okay, well, well, thank you very much, trustees. And I will say, before we move into the, the final part of our presentation, which will be shorter, I promise, is there any other final comments about outdoor dining that we should take with us as we move forward, working with our restaurants? For outdoor dining?
It's just, Peter, I just wanted to mention that when I suggested that this exit become an entrance, I don't have a problem necessarily with it being an exit. I don't have any problem with one-way flow. So I, I, I wouldn't, I hope that we're not immediately taking that off the table. I think we should be as flexible as possible.
Absolutely. Thank you, trustee Mulvaney. And if you think of anything else, feel free to, to stop me. But the, the next portion of our presentation is just more so to provide an update on downtown parking. In the coming months, staff would like to look a little bit further into some of the feedback we received in that survey about parking. I will say, for some of our trustees who have been on the board for, for longer, this is not the first time you've heard about parking in our downtown. So we intend to take more of a comprehensive look at the village's existing downtown parking landscape. Just as an image here on the screen, I, I, we have visualized our, our two-hour parking. We also have fifteen-minute parking and then some other parking configurations such as B parking for our, our business owners as well. But we, we do recommend, we can say that we recommend keeping the temporary carryout parking spaces into the future. What that looks like exactly, we don't, we're not for sure. But we have received very positive feedback from our restaurant community. It has been pretty successful from what we see. So I referenced our two-hour and fifteen-minute parking. The feedback we received was that it's not meeting our current needs. So staff wants to work very closely with our businesses and report back to the board on possible modifications for the future. I will note that as part of the village's new parking management system, we do have the flexibility, since it's much more digital, to, to offer flexibility based on location or time. So that's exciting for us. Just some examples at the top of the head, this, this might include extending parking time limits in certain locations in the downtown. But we really do want to take a, a close look at this and report back to the board once we have more information. So that is what we wanted to get your feedback on this evening. Does anyone have any questions or concluding thoughts before we move on to the next item?
Okay, if no questions, our next item is discussion regarding creation of personnel policies for flexible work arrangements and family care leave. I would ask our assistant village manager and our village manager, Sharon Tanner and Phil Crowley, to present that.
Thanks, President Levin. I'm going to get started and then get out of the way. And Sharon's going to, going to take the majority of this presentation. I just wanted to, in terms of framing out the reason that we're bringing these, these two policies forward to you this evening is directly related to the village's current strategic plan. When it was approved back in 2018, you may recall that about a quarter of the initiatives and an entire goal set was focused on staffing. And in particular, these two, these two policies, one of which was specifically called out as a, a work initiative to develop. And the other, which was alluded to, and another of, in terms of, of working to make the village an employer of choice, are probably coming to you a bit later than we would have expected, partly due to the fact that the pandemic got in the way. And many of, both of these have been in, in development for well over two years. And I, I think what we've learned through the pandemic is that there are, there were applications of, of at least the flexible work arrangements policy that we have before you. We pretty much had all of our administrative staff functioning in that way for three and a half months. And since we've been back in Village Hall, have had approximately fifty percent of the, of the workforce in the building at any one time. So we've got a lot of awareness of how well it worked. And in the case of the family leave policy, this is in response to those discussions back in 2018 with the village board about finding ways to both attract, but more importantly, retain the quality staff that we have. And one of the ways that we were asked to do that was to find ways that don't necessarily cost extra money and to get creative with those policies. And so just to, I wanted to just give you that, that background. It's been a little while since we've talked about these, obviously, or talked about this goal set area. But we wanted to bring these back to you now that we're, we're, we're ready. The, the pandemic isn't over, but, but we've certainly gotten through, we think, the worst of it. And with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Sharon and we will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you very much. That's a great setup for this discussion. As manager Crowley had mentioned, both of these programs are directly related to the strategic plan initiatives. And I'll talk a little bit more about that with each of them. If you have questions, please do feel free to stop me along the way. Or if there's, if I'm getting too in the weeds, feel free to let me know that as well. This evening, we will request your feedback as to your thoughts on these potential programs. And if you're amenable to them, bring them back to you in April for formal consideration, the April fifteenth. I'll start with the flexible work arrangements program. Phil had mentioned that this is specifically called out as an initiative within the strategic plan. The goal is really to add flexibility for both employees and the village where it's operationally feasible, focusing first on our customer service delivery and the village's operational needs. We think that there are many different ways that we can achieve all of those objectives by offering employees a little bit of flexibility with when they start and on their day. So long as there's a good dialogue between employees and their supervisors. I should mention that the flexible work arrangements program that we're, we've brought before you would be applicable to administrative non-bargaining unit positions that really lend themselves more to some flexibility versus, say, a shift work position. The pandemic did give us, while it slowed down our timeframe, we had hoped to bring this to you at this time last year. But the world changed pretty dramatically that time. The pandemic actually gave us some really good learning opportunities with both flexible scheduling and with telecommuting. And because of that, we, we fast-forwarded a bit in our thought process where a year ago, we would have brought this to you as a pilot program. But we're prepared at this point to recommend it as an ongoing program that we can offer to eligible employees because of that learning experience that we've had. And because of some of the things that we've been able to accomplish with developing different schedules or utilizing hybrid work environments with regards to telecommuting. The third component of the flexible work arrangements program that was summarized in the memo in your packet is something that would be a pilot program to be offered no earlier than next summer, that is, the summer of 2022, which we've kind of dubbed our summer hours program. You may be familiar with similar types of structures in some of, some of your businesses or in others. But essentially, for non-bargaining unit administrative positions, participating employees during the summer months would be put into two groups, would work alternating modified work weeks. So one week would be modified, one week would not be modified. During the modified work week, Monday through Thursday days are elongated slightly by an hour, and then Friday days are shortened to a four-hour day. It's simply, it's a nice arrangement to be able to offer people to provide a little bit of flexibility without having to make any changes to the village's operational hours. We think that the summer of 2022 would be a more appropriate time to pilot this than this summer. Because as Phil had alluded to, we are still emerging from the pandemic and we haven't quite gotten out of our, our, our full pandemic operations. Are there any questions on the flexible work arrangements before I move on? And some of these are probably pretty familiar with, with maybe policies that you've encountered elsewhere. Okay, I will move on. The second aspect of this that we have before you this evening is a pilot program for family care leave that would be offered to non-bargaining unit employees. And we would propose reviewing this program no later than June thirtieth of 2023. This program relates directly to the strategic plan initiative to evaluate and make changes to the village's work employ, excuse me, work environment to be an employer of choice. And it also has the added component of recognizing the diversity of different family care needs and different family structures that, that exist. This program would essentially expand our existing childbirth adoption leave benefit to be applicable to a broader range of family care needs, recognizing that sometimes people need leave in order for childbirth and adoption events. And other times, people need leave for other situations, such as caring for a family member with a serious health condition or providing care for perhaps an older relative or a parent. You may have heard about the sandwich generation that's doing a bit of both. So the intent is to make a benefit program that could be used in a variety of different circumstances. It would essentially also build upon leave under the Family Medical Leave Act by providing pay for up to two hundred and forty hours, which is six weeks. And again, expanding the type of family care leave for some situations that wouldn't otherwise be covered by the FMLA. As we've developed in this program, some of the qualifying absences would be caring for a family member's serious health condition, a childbirth or adoption event, and then fulfilling power of attorney responsibilities for a family member. Again, we do contemplate a broader definition of family member, recognizing that oftentimes, employees are called upon to provide care for different family members based upon their unique family structures that may not simply be limited to a spouse, a parent, or a child. This is a progressive benefit that we believe would support the village in attracting and retaining top employees. If it were to be implemented, we would require a detailed application process and have an interactive process with the employee to determine their eligibility for the leave. If FMLA is also applicable in a leave situation, we would go through our normal process to determine that eligibility and designate the leave as FMLA. But as you're likely aware, the FMLA itself is unpaid leave. This would provide a partially paid component for FMLA situations as well as some other situations that aren't covered by the FMLA. If this situation wasn't covered by the FMLA, we would have an application process that's structured very, very similarly to ensure that we're getting sufficient information to determine that the leave qualifies for the benefit program. The intent is for us to evaluate the program in all of its, all of its pieces and parts within a two-year timeframe. That could be a little sooner or it could be closer to that two-year mark. Since these types of leave events aren't necessarily everyday occurrences and nor is this benefit intended to apply to the more run-of-the-mill everyday occurrences. For example, it's not intended to apply to kind of a one-off absence if you've got a, a child with a cold who needs to stay at home from school or you need to accompany a parent to a routine doctor visit. It's not intended for those situations. It's really intended to help employees bridge some more robust leave needs when there are major situations that they're working through with their family to provide care. Phil, if there, there is anything that you would like to add, please do feel free to stop me. But I think, I, I don't want to be too redundant of what's already been addressed in your packet this evening and ask if you have any questions.
I don't have anything to add, Sharon. I think you've covered it.
I have a quick technical question, because I'm in favor of all of this. But I'll wait my turn. But I did have a, a technical question, which is, is this program, if something qualifies for FMLA would, and somebody wants to take advantage of this program as well, would they run concurrently?
Yes. Yes, yes, that's a great question. They would. The FMLA as an unpaid leave sits on top of any sort of paid leave that might be utilized, whether it's this or, or in our current.
But these wouldn't run serially. In other words, that could take, that's what I wanted to confirm.
No, this would not extend the FMLA period by any means. It's simply a mechanism to provide paid leave. Whereas the FMLA in and of itself is unpaid, sits right on top of that paid leave.
You didn't mention the, the partial telecommuting and the core hours, I don't think, just now, unless I blanked out. But, but I did like, I did like those as well. I thought those, those looked like good, good employee programs that would, you know, help with productivity as well as recruit, recruiting and, and retention.
Thank you for that feedback.
As Sharon said, if the, if the board's comfortable with moving forward with this, and I'm, I'm getting the sense that you are, based on the number of comments, what we would do then is to kind of codify them as amendments to the personnel policy or our, I'm sorry, it's an employee.
Our handbook.
Yeah, I use the old-fashioned, the old-fashioned terminology sometimes. The employee handbook, and we would bring that back in April as a resolution that would amend the handbook to, to include both the pilot programs, which would obviously have a sunset provision, and to then include also the, the telecommuting and, and components to that flexible work schedule. So. flexible work schedule. So if, if you're good with that, we're good with that.
Okay. The next order of business is update on electric aggregation of the program that we're involved in as it relates to the village of Glencoe. And Jordan, you and Megan Olson, I believe, are going to fill us in on that.
Yes, I will, I will give you an overview, and then if I have questions for Megan, she will certainly help. I will share my screen, and then please let me know when you can see it. Wonderful, thank you. So tonight, Megan and I just wanted to give you a brief update. We did have a lot of information in the packet, and since we've discussed this several times with the board before, we don't want to repeat anything, but if you do have any questions, feel free to stop me at any time. So we just wanted to let you know that although we haven't talked about it in a few months, the village as part of the North Shore Electricity Aggregation Consortium, or the consortium, is working on an RFP process for our aggregation 2.0 concept. And in a prior committee of the whole meeting, I talked about what the difference between aggregation 1.0 and 2.0 is. But just as a reminder, because it's been some time, and also because the consortium has been working on our consortium-sponsored community solar program, we just wanted to give you just a quick refresher. So for the electric aggregation concept that we're talking about tonight, certain residential and small business customers in the consortium would be offered electricity from a different provider than ComEd. And that, those residential and small business customers would be selected based on the cost of providing them electricity. So the cost savings in these select residential and business customers, that savings would be given to the village of Glencoe in the form of a grant. And that grant would be intended to be used for sustainability-minded projects, activities at, at the, at the board and the village's discretion. Community solar, which you might remember seeing a postcard coming to your home a few months ago, is an opt-in program where residents can individually sign up to, to support community solar. You don't need to have your own rooftop panels or install them in your yard. And you can save up to 20% on your electric bills. And just as a plug, if you're interested and you're listening, go to villageofglencoe.org/community-solar. So this evening, we're talking about that first concept, electric aggregation. Here's just a reminder of our timeframe. If you can remember, pre-COVID, in early 2020, the consortium got together to talk about a new idea of electric aggregation. The consortium was founded, I think, in 2011 or 2012, and the first electric aggregation concept came into play, but it's no longer markets. It's no longer, we would not be able to have cost, cost savings based on market conditions and the current ComEd rate. So that's why the consortium came together early last year to talk about this 2.0 concept. Then in the summer and the fall, we kept talking about it and had intended to release a request for proposals in the fall. Moving to the next line, you might remember Megan and I talking to you trustees in the fall because we needed to update our plan of governance and operations to allow us legally to move forward in this procurement process because our initial pogo or plan of governance did not contemplate this new aggregation 2.0 concept. So the board adopted amendments to our plan of governance to participate. Just due to COVID, it was stalled, but earlier this month, and in February, the consortium resumed discussions. And on March 10th, the consortium issued a very comprehensive 75-page request for proposals for electricity providers. So I will say that that period will close later this month. And, and the consortium will review all of the applications that we receive. I, I do want to emphasize that yet again, the village of Glencoe, although we're part of the consortium, we're not legally obligated to accept any of the proposals that are submitted as part of this, as part of this procurement process. We can, we can vet out the, the proposals, and we can say, no, we're not interested, or if we are, proceed at that point. But staff intends to work closely with our legal team and then, once the process closes and then make a recommendation. So that's our update this evening. Like I said, it's been some time since we discussed it, and we'll have more information for you in the coming weeks. Does anyone have any questions about that, that quick overview?
I have a quick question. Let's say that somebody, these businesses opt in to receive this consortium electricity rate, and it's dramatically higher than ComEd, then what?
So that's a great question. So the, the intent of this is not to have anyone pay more than ComEd. If we were to go with this concept, it would be a price match to the ComEd rate, so they would be paying the same. However, we did include in the RFP language that there would be no fee for early termination. That was something that we made clear of. That's a good question. We don't want anyone to be put in a situation that they can't remove themselves from or pay more.
But how does that work? So let's say that Home, Hometown agrees. They opt in for this community electricity rate, and, and it comes in higher than ComEd. Does the village make them whole, and then the village takes a hit? So I apologize, I'm just not understanding how it works.
Well, that's a great question, Trustee Hallwax. So let me take a step back, and hopefully, I can explain it a little bit better. So this electric aggregation concept would only be available to certain small businesses and homeowners that the cost to providing them electricity through the alternate service provider is less than what it costs for ComEd to do so. So they would not be paying any more than the ComEd rate. However, that savings in providing those select small businesses or residences would be given to the village. So, long story short, the intent again is nobody would be paying more than they would for the ComEd rate. That's not something that we'd be interested in pursuing. Does that answer your question? I don't think that there, there would be an opportunity for the village to be paying more, because that's not the intent of the, of the program for these residences and small businesses.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Does anyone have any other business that they would like to raise or questions this evening? If not, I would ask, Jordan, are there any comments that were submitted during the meeting that should be read now?
President Levin, no, we did not receive any additional public comment.
Okay, excellent. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Real quick, before we do that, we will adjourn this meeting. You can, you can just leave your, you can leave your Zoom open, because we'll be on the same one for the board meeting. But if you, you know, turn off camera and, and microphone, we've got about 15 minutes till the village board meeting starts. Sorry, President Levin, I just wanted to jump in with that.
That's a good idea, because otherwise we'll lose everybody, then nobody will know what to do. We'll have a very fast board meeting without members. With, with that comment, and now it's that we can take a slight recess, leaving everything on and just turning off our cameras for about 15 minutes, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mulvaney.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vry.
Yes.
We're adjourned.
Okay, thank you all. See you in about 15 minutes.
Hi, Steve. How are you?
Good.
We finished a little early, so everyone will be back in just a few minutes.
Okay, everything go okay?
Yep.
The tie looks like it's blue. It's actually purple.
I was gonna say that is a very blue tie, but it's it's not. Oh, boy.
It's not, not at all.
Phil and Steve, I just wanted to let you know too that I think more folks are trickling in, but we're still live on Facebook and still recording. So just to let you know that that hasn't stopped just because the meetings have.
Appreciate it.
Who knows the color of my tie?
It's a lovely tie.
It's purple, though.
Hello, Steve. How are you?
Wait just a moment, President Levin. But you can probably get started with your preface in just a moment.
Okay.
We're just at seven o'clock now. And we are already recording and broadcasting live. If you want to get started, I think you can.
Okay. Let me start with the preface, which we'll go through in preparation for these meetings for everyone. Pursuant to recently adopted amendments to the Illinois Open Meetings Act, included in Public Act 101-0604, public bodies may, in certain circumstances, hold entirely virtual public meetings without a quorum physically present in any one location. Under authority granted to me on March 17, 2020, I issued a declaration of emergency to address the health threat posed by the COVID-19 pandemic. On June 15, 2020, I executed a written determination that, given the ongoing emergency associated with the COVID-19 pandemic, in-person meetings of the Board of Trustees are not practical or prudent. On March 5, 2021, Governor Pritzker issued his most recent disaster proclamation, an executive order 2021-05, that declared in-person attendance at public meetings of more than 10 people at the regular public meeting location to be infeasible. In accordance with above actions, I have also determined that in-person meetings of the Board of Trustees are not practical or prudent at this time and until further notice. Accordingly, this village board meeting is being conducted virtually with members participating through the Zoom webinar platform. Village manager Corrali is in the Village Hall Council chamber as required by the Open Meetings Act. May I request a roll call, please?
Certainly, President Levin. Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Here.
Trustee Rubin.
Here.
Trustee Vrie.
Here.
We have a quorum, President Levin.
Thank you. As noted, today's village board meeting is being conducted as a virtual meeting via Zoom webinar software and is being audio recorded and simulcast on the village's Facebook page in compliance with state law. A quorum of members of the board are present via remote access. Help facilitate this meeting. I would ask members of the public that you remain muted and should remain so during the rest of the meeting. After each agenda item is presented, I will ask each trustee if they have any questions or comments. I will call the trustees in alphabetical order. As required by law, I will ask for a roll call rather than a voice vote on any agenda item requiring a vote. The first order of business on tonight's agenda is consideration of the Board of Trustees Committee of the whole meeting of minutes of February 18, 2020, that started at 5:30 p.m. and the Board of Trustees' regular meeting on February 18, 2020, that started at 7 p.m. Are there any questions or corrections with respect to those minutes?
Just for the record, President Levin, apologize. Those were February 18, 2021, both of those meetings.
Oh, you are correct.
That's a print on my part.
Well, with the pandemic, we never can tell which year it is.
That's a good point.
Do I hear any corrections or questions? If not, may I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the February 18, 2021 closed committee of the whole and Board of Trustees meeting?
So moved.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listner.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Thank you. Our next order of business is a culture of caring moment. As was discussed at our February board meeting, tonight we are trying something new. At the request of trustee Mulvaney, the village board added a culture of caring moment to our agenda and tonight's its first opportunity. I would ask trustee Mulvaney, since he had requested this and has suggested that he would be willing to do our first culture of caring moment, I would like to turn the meeting over to him and ask him to explain a little bit about this new agenda addition and then share his culture of caring moment.
Thank you, President Levin. So a culture of caring moment, you know, the idea is to help enforce a culture within the organization. And this is nothing new in many different organizations and institutions. Some might call it a safety moment, moment of caring. There's lots of different sort of notions here or names. And the name should be representative of what we think is appropriate for the culture of the village of Glencoe. And I thought the notion of a culture of caring moment is appropriate, but of course, we should make it what we want. The idea is to, at the beginning of any meeting, to provide an opportunity for somebody in that meeting, certainly does not have to be the leader of the meeting, but an opportunity for anyone to speak up and raise an issue of concern. Now, obviously, if we go with the route of a sort of a safety moment, it would be safety oriented. But personally, I'm going to suggest this notion of caring moment. And what does that mean? So this week, we do this in my firm, something we've instilled in our in our culture. And it really does help to instill a culture. And I'll admit, when I came to the firm, I was an eye roller. I was like, oh, my gosh, seriously? We have a, at the time, call them safety moments. And I was like, really? We're going to take time to do this? It seemed crazy to me. But I have become a major advocate of this idea. I have really seen people, I've really seen it influence our culture and certainly me. So I'd love it if we could give this a try. In just the past few days, topics of culture of caring, and we do this in almost every meeting that we have. But topics have ranged from ergonomics, as we're all working from home. They could cover ideas around how to have better ergonomics. It could be simple safety awareness. And we've, you know, I'm just thinking about this past week for me. We've had a culture of caring moments about the importance of being aware of your surroundings as us, you know, making sure that you're cognizant of where you're at. We've had moments around menopause, Asian violence. Gosh, you name it. It's really an open and broad idea. An opportunity for anybody in the in the meeting to raise awareness of an issue. Oh, we had somebody talk about dryer safety, the vent cleaning out your vent of your home dryer. So you reduce the risk of fires. We had somebody else talk about, you know, whether you should have your doors open or closed for prevention of fire injury. And it turns out you're supposed to have your doors closed, your bedroom doors closed. So anyhow, that's the that's the idea. So a culture of caring moment, and honestly, I am winging this. So the culture of caring moment that I'll share is is how to care for somebody having a seizure. My first experience with this was when I was about 16 years old. I was alone traveling at a bus station. And the person next to me, I had a seizure, the first time I'd ever experienced it. And quite honestly, it really scared me. So so I want to share with with you all, if you are in the in the position where you need to care for somebody having a seizure. And by the way, it's roughly 1 in 100 people are affected by seizures. So what should you do? First off, be aware, is the person in a dangerous environment? If so, you can move them. But otherwise, what you want to do is is move things that might be a danger to that person away. So if there are things like lamp posts, you should move the lamp posts or, you know, lampshade, lamps, chairs, anything that they might knock over inadvertently. If they're if they're at risk of damaging their damaging their head, it's okay to find something soft to cushion their head. You should not, as many people may have been led to believe, try to restrain a person or put something in their mouth. You should just give them the space they need to have the seizure. You should also make note of the time when you notice somebody having a seizure because if it lasts more than five minutes, it's time to call the ambulance. You really don't necessarily need to call the ambulance unless the seizure extends beyond five minutes. You should talk and stay with the person through the through the seizure. Don't yourself get, try not to get too, if you're not familiar with it, you know, don't get too nervous yourself. You don't need to be yelling at the person. You don't have to scream and try and get their attention. Stay with them, remain calm. And as they come to, make sure that they're breathing properly. Make sure that that you stay with them, talk calmly and see that they haven't swallowed dentures or something along those lines. In case they were eating, you have to make sure that they're breathing properly. But just stay with the person until they recover. So it's really a lot of common sense, but if you're unprepared with this, it can be quite a scary experience. So so that's my culture of caring moment. And normally, what we would do is you have a take a moment to to discuss this in the group. Usually, our culture of caring moments don't take more than two minutes. But sometimes they really do evolve into into meaningful dialogues where people are sharing experiences. So President Levin, that's the notion of a culture of caring. Again, the it's the intent is to is to create an environment where people are learning and how to care for each other and to do that in a very open, friendly way. Take the moment in front of a meeting to do this. So today was a little bit long-winded here because I didn't have a concise statement in mind, but that's that's what I've got. I'll open it up to anybody else who wants to comment.
Would anybody like to comment or ask Peter a question with respect to the things he helped us learn about?
Peter Owen.
I'll just I'll just say I like the idea of it. I don't have anything to add about about seizures per se, but. But I, I think it will, I would definitely have, have been an eye roller had you not warned me off of it by saying that you're, you're a convert. And so I, well, I won't be here a whole lot longer since my term is almost up. But, but it does sound like an idea worth, worth trying. And thank you. That was interesting.
Yeah, I want to thank you for providing our inaugural Culture of Caring Moment, Peter, and explaining it. That was very helpful. And Barbara, having seized the moment, given that discussion and said that she's prepared to work on becoming a convert possibly. If we're going to continue this, do I have anybody who wants to volunteer so they can think about it in advance to provide our Culture of Caring Moment at our April meeting?
Let me tell you, it is not difficult. Just think about something you care about and share it. I can provide, if it's helpful, I probably have several hundred Culture of Caring Moment PowerPoint slides if people want to look at them and have a bank of, of ideas.
I'm game.
Oh, Joe, would you mind if I jumped, if I jumped in?
Absolutely.
Many opportunities, and I literally have only one left.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, I will go forward, having Karen, having Barbara carry on the great beginning that Peter provided us with. Again, thank you, Peter. Public comment is our next item on the agenda. In accordance with the supplemental rule the Board approved on April 16th, 2020, here is how public comment will be taken at this meeting. The email address and telephone number designated for public comment for this meeting were published with the meeting agenda. In a moment, I will ask that Assistant to the Village Manager, Jordan Lester, read the public comments received on non-agenda items that were submitted prior to the meeting. Public comments on agenda items, if any, will be read when we reach the item on the agenda. Assistant Village, Assistant to the Village Manager Lester, were there any public comments on non-agenda items received with respect to tonight's meeting?
President Levin, we did not receive any public comment for this meeting for agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. If a member of the public would like to submit a public comment during the meeting, please email your comment to glencoe meeting, that's singular, at villageofglencoe.org. Comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting. Written comments should be limited to 400 words. All right, this is the time for our committee reports. I will start by mentioning that at our Committee of the Whole Meeting this evening, we had several topics that we discussed. The first and most lengthy one was a discussion with respect to how the business district will be handled for our places of business, our restaurants, with respect to outdoor dining during the coming spring and summer season. The next item that we discussed was an update on the creation of a personnel policies for flexible work arrangements and for family leave. And we also had an update on the electric aggregation program in the village of Glencoe. And those were the three subjects that the Board received information on this evening at the Committee of the Whole. Trustee Vry, would you tell us what went on at the Finance Committee this week?
I will. Thank you, President Levin. So we had our, our meeting this month. We had our normal agenda where we talked about the village finances. Things are going relatively according to plan. Few things a little different so far, but it's still early in the year with permits perhaps coming in a little bit light, but that, that can be lumpy. So, so far, so good. Water continues to run a little ahead of plan. People are still home, still using more water. And we spent the most of the meeting, though, talking about our pension funding model and sort of working on our pension, call it problems, as far as making sure that we continue to fund them appropriately. And so we discussed different ways of appropriately funding the pension relative to the state mandated ways versus what the village actuary thinks we ought to do. And the goal is to improve our level of funding for the overall pension while not burdening residents currently versus residents in the future too much. And so we spent a lot of time discussing how best to do that. And I think we made progress, I hope. For those who were there, it was a lot of back and forth. But anyway, that's, that was the bulk of the meeting. It was just talking about pension funding, very exciting stuff.
Thank you. Barbara, did we have anything occur with respect to the Plan Commission this past month?
We did. The Plan Commission met on February 24th. And we had two items on the agenda. We had an appearance review for the property at 340 Tudor Court, which is the, the former Tudor Wine Bar and is now a Pilates studio. And they wanted to eliminate their awning and instead go to a wall sign. And that was approved. And then we spent the, the rest of the meeting with a staff presentation and then, and then a discussion about approaches and best practices for comprehensive planning. We're, we're in clear agreement that we need to update the plan to address new trends in planning and make the plan more useful. New trends include things like resilience, systems thinking, community engagement, equity, adaptability. It will certainly incorporate many of the principles of eco districts. The Commission spent a fair amount of time addressing or asking the staff to make sure that we know what did and didn't work in the current plan. And the plan process will, as, as it did before with the downtown tune-up, begin with a, some sort of robust public participation, doing it, you know, within and without the pandemic, depending on, on how quickly things open up. We meet again on March 24th, and that will be another exterior appearance review. And that will be the retail tenant space at 668 Vernon, which will be GP's Pizza Restaurant. That's the old art, art store on the west side of Vernon. And that is it for the Plan Commission. Thanks.
Thank you, Barbara. Joe, did the Golf Advisory Committee have a meeting this month?
It did meet on Monday. I first want to acknowledge Public Safety Director Lewandowski and his University of Illinois Fighting Illness Orange tonight. We appreciate your support. I actually unfortunately missed the meeting on Monday due to a work issue, but caught up with Stella this week and had some, some things to report. And I will be seeing Stella more frequently because the big update is the golf course in range open tomorrow on Friday, March 19th, which is fantastic. And if you remember, last year, we opened, then closed, and then we're open again in May, but the May, May opening was only at its very limited capacity of, I believe it was 25%. And already for the weekend, we have 250 people booked. And once the buzz of being open circulates a bit more, I would think that number can move higher. Stella and staff are working to be in line with all the Illinois guidelines. They're opening the season with the pro shop closed and staff inside masks are required. But the staff certainly hoping that they don't have to be overly policing people. That people will continue to be cognizant of, of what is being asked of them when they come to play. Permanent tee time sales are going well, and there's a handful of limited opportunities to sign up for more. Note that Sportsman's is not going to be open up until later this summer. So if weather is decent, we expect good demand for people to be outside and to be playing golf. We have a new caterer in à la carte catering who also operates out of Willmet. And, you know, we're very excited for this new partnership and expect that they will put out a nice spread at the golf course, hopefully that attracts people to stay longer after playing or even for local residents to come and enjoy some outdoor dining. Lastly, the Friends of the Glencoe Golf Club Board meets tomorrow. We're going to be doing training on the art of the ask. So this is about messaging. We have a great product and a great project. And this is about packaging that information and how we message that to potential donors.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Trustee Mulvaney, do you have a report on the Sustainability Task Force?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Yes, thank you for that dramatic pause. We, we have met and we are advancing our six initiatives. Two that I'll highlight are a water initiative. We've been developing a poster of education around how to better manage your water resources at your home. And that's progressing. We're finding outlets for this new image and would welcome any feedback. And as you start to see it in our public education campaign. The other, perhaps, place to mention is the eco districts. We're continuing to meet with organizations and talking about the eco district. We had a meeting with Bruce at Planning to sort of further discuss the, the idea of incorporating eco district elements into the comprehensive plan, as Barbara mentioned. And we are also planning for our sort of recycle day, recycle reuse really day to try and get materials out of the waste stream. And as you all know, we had some great success last year with, with having an event where people can bring materials that can be reused in, instead of putting it in front of the front yard for landfilling. And I'll just remind you all that as we saw, if you've been here for a while, you know that we get piles of things in the, in our yards for pickup and disposal in the landfill. And many of those items can be reused and they are of high value. So we're trying to create opportunities to bring that material into a second life instead of landfilling. So that's my report. Oh, unless Megan, if you're able, my memory is not so great. So if, if I forgot that we, our last meeting was last month, almost a month ago. So if I forgot anything, please chime in. But meanwhile, we will meet again Tuesday, this coming Tuesday. As posted on the Village website, please go to the committee link and find our, a link to our meetings. Megan, was there anything that I missed?
I think you did a great job summarizing the last meeting. And Village Manager Crowley will give us an update on all of the recycling events that are to come this spring. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Megan.
All right, Gary Rubin, do you have a report on the Community Relations Forum?
I do. We continue to meet twice a month, pretty busy schedule. And one of the things we talked about at our meetings was how we can further work with Sustainability Task Force in connection with the eco district work, especially as their emphasis on equity is quite aligned with, of course, the work that we're doing. So we're continuing to think about that, and I'm sure there'll be further discussions. We also are, this probably will come up in the context of the review that the village has asked of the ordinance that frankly creates the forum. And the review of that and how the forum, the size of the forum. And one topic in particular was trying to create perhaps more diversity among the forum members itself in terms of thinking about that, this board, thinking about that when they appoint future members to that forum. And, and another item that really, I say for last, because I think it's really quite the highlight, is our first town hall discussion will be held via Zoom, April 21st. And, you know, it's focusing on DEI in the village, but it will have as our panelists Catherine Wang from District 35, Karen Ellison from the Glencoe Historical Society, Bill Hanson from the Glencoe Family Services, and Michael Helbertson, pardon me, from Writers Theater. And it should be a very lively and informative discussion. And then we hope to learn from that one and continue on and continue the series of these things. And try to publicize it in various and sundry ways to our residents and to others. And lastly, we continue to focus on the other individual initiatives, which I talked about. Is also ongoing.
Thank you. Now we come to the Village Managers' Report, which will give you a chance to spend the next two hours talking about all the spring cleanup and recycling events we just heard about.
I, I will take that not as a challenge. I'm going to try not to speak for two hours, but I, I do appreciate a few moments this evening to report out on some, I think, exciting things for our community. As the Board is aware, the village of Glencoe has been participating with about 11 other area communities on a vaccination pod at Nutriers Northfield Campus. We had our first event back on February 24th. This is a partnership and a pilot partnership with Cook County to utilize paramedics to administer COVID vaccinations. This pod was set up to provide those vaccines for teachers and school staff in those 12 communities as well as municipal frontline employees. I'm very pleased to report that since that first event back on the 24th of February, we have provided at least the first dose of vaccine for over 1,500 teachers, school staff, and municipal employees. And we hope to continue that effort. The most recent event was today. Village employees have been working at that vaccination site. I myself worked on the 24th of February. I will say it was one of the most rewarding experiences I've had in my professional life to see the faces of individuals who are receiving this vaccine and the palpable relief in the room as those folks were coming through the building. Our paramedics here in Glencoe are participating in this event as well. And it really is a hallmark partnership between the county, between these 12 communities and our school districts. It, it's, it's really tremendous. And it came from a few ideas from some folks who were able to put, put it into action. We're very grateful to our Cook County Commissioner Larry Sufferton, who has been instrumental in working this at the county level. And of course, to Public Safety Director Lewandowski and Assistant Village Manager Sharon Tanner, who have handled a lot of the logistics internally here with staff and getting folks trained, getting folks registered, getting folks scheduled to be volunteers. An offshoot of this, and something that I think is particularly important today, but will be something that we continue to work toward over the coming few weeks and months, is that five of the communities that have, that have been part of this vaccination pod got together a few weeks ago to start talking about ways that we could utilize the space at Nutriers Northfield Campus to bring vaccines to the general public. As many of you know, a lot of Cook County's mass vaccination sites are a fair distance away from Glencoe. And we have been trying to find ways to, to bring that closer. I'm very excited to share that the village of Glencoe, in partnership with Kennelworth, Northfield, Willmet, and Winnetka, will be providing a vaccination event for residents of our five communities who are over the age of 65. That event will be hosted, as I noted, at Nutriers Northfield Campus, which is That event will be hosted, as I noted, at Nutriers Northfield Campus, which is Seven Hap Road in Northfield. On this coming Tuesday, March 23rd, this is, that will be the first dose. This is the Moderna vaccine, so it is a four week waiting period for the second dose. And so that second day will be Tuesday, April 20th. Vaccination appointments are only going to be made via telephone. We are not releasing a online link. And we will be hosting call centers at the village of Glencoe, the villages, also the villages of Kennelworth, Willmett and Winnetka. That call in is tomorrow, Friday, March 19th, from 10:00 AM till 4:00 PM or until all of the appointments are filled. The vaccination appointments are going to be made on a first come, first served basis. And approximately 1,100 appointments will be available. We're also partnering with Nutrior Township, who is outreach to at-risk seniors or those who may be unaware of the, this effort, in an effort to give them appointments for these vaccine opportunities. Once the appointments are filled and the call centers go quiet, there will be automated messages at all of the phone numbers that are listed there on the screen. As I mentioned, there is no online registration portal available. I should have mentioned, this too is a partnership with Cook County, though less directly than the vaccination pod that we've been working through. It's also a partnership with Albertson's Jewel Osko, who is providing the vaccine as well as the individuals who will be doing the vaccinations. It will be hosted at Nutrior, as I mentioned, but it's going to be staffed in terms of the administration, in terms of getting people registered once they're onsite, in terms of moving people through the various waiting areas by our municipal employees. Again, those participating communities, the five communities. There are some eligibility requirements. As I, as I indicated, this is intended to be an event for seniors aged 65 and above. And is limited to the five communities that are on the screen there, Glencoe, Kennelworth, Northfield, Willmett and Winnetka. Individuals will have to present a valid driver's license and insurance card at the vaccination site. And after registering over the phone, individuals will then receive an email with authorization documents that have to be filled out and brought to the vaccination site. Those that are signing up to be vaccinated must be available on both dates, the 23rd and the 20th. We cannot change those dates. There is some flexibility on the time on both of those dates, but they do need to be there for both. And they, at this point, do need to provide their own transportation to and from the site. We are encouraging our community to share this information. I'm very grateful that all of our community partners in Glencoe, including most of our houses of worship, the Park District Library, Glencoe Family Services, the Glencoe Historical Society, District 35, all have been sharing this information on their social media feeds as well as sending out email blasts to their membership in hopes that for those individuals who have struggled to be able to get a COVID vaccine elsewhere, that we can reach them and get them something quickly and nearby. So we are asking folks to be good neighbors. If you've got a neighbor down the street who may have been struggling to get vaccine, please knock on their door and let them know about this, this opportunity. Let them know to call one of these phone numbers. And they will be able to reach somebody who will hopefully be able to get them a vaccination appointment. Again, we're really excited to be able to provide this. We hope we're going to be able to continue to provide events like this that are starting to open to the general public. Vaccine is still to some degree in short supply, but it's not as short a supply as it had been even just a few weeks ago. So we are very excited about this, looking forward to this opportunity. As I've told the staff in a number of, of our conversations that we've had over the last three or so weeks since this events, since these events started, this to some degree may be the most important work we do in service to our community. And being able to save people's lives and make these vaccines accessible to them is really, really good and important work. And I'm, I'm very pleased with the work that our team has appreciative that, you know, many of them are, are, are spending extra hours trying to get their work done here at the village hall, but also spend time at the vaccination site. And it's really been a real rewarding experience. So I hope if, if any of you watching tonight or anybody on the board or who may see this before tomorrow at 10:00 AM, please let those individuals in the community or in any of those other four communities that I listed know about this so that they can try and get a vaccine appointment. Were there any questions on this that anyone had that I can answer? Okay.
So it might be helpful if Jordan would send each of the members of the Board of Trustees, an email that will have the four phone numbers that can be used and the list of communities.
Happy to do so. Related to this, many of you may have seen that today Governor Pritzker announced a new update to the Restore Illinois reopening plan. You'll recall that the Restore Illinois Plan was created last year as a means of providing a somewhat understandable way to understand the restrictions and how we move to a state of being shut down to a state of being fully reopened. Today, a new phase in the five A's plan was introduced and that's called the bridge phase. It's designed to ease the transition from phase four to phase five. Phase five is where we all want to be. Phase five is where things start to feel pretty much like they did pre-COVID. Where very few restrictions still exist and life feels like it's going back to normal. So what's in the new bridge phase? As you can see on the screen, we're currently in phase four and there are a number of, of restrictions. And there had not been a lot of clarity on how you got from those fairly stringent restrictions to being completely open. And what the state has now provided is this bridge phase that's intended to step us up toward reopening. So it includes changed capacities for indoor and outdoor dining from the standpoint of the size of groups as well as standing areas indoors and out. Health and fitness facilities now can, when we get to the bridge phase, and I'll get that to, in a, get to that in a moment. When we get to the bridge phase, may increase their capacity to 60% and expand to 50 or fewer indoors or 100 and fewer outdoors. Retail and personal care can increase capacity to 60%. Social events can have capacity lift, limited to 250 people indoors, 500 people out. Ticketed spectator events, museums, zoos, and amusement parks can increase capacity to 60%. And outdoor general admission events can have capacity of 30 people per 1,000 square feet. We will hopefully be able to move to the bridge phase once 70% of seniors over the age of 65 are vaccinated and this, and the health metrics that the state is tracking remain stable. That has been the case so far, those, those health metrics. And we're currently at 58% of seniors over the age of 65 who've received at least one dose of the vaccine. So we're very much in, within reach of moving to this bridge phase. The transition from the bridge phase to phase five, as you can see on the screen, is focused on getting adults vaccinated for COVID. And again, maintaining those stable health metrics. The goal is to get to at least 50% of those over the age 16, their first vaccine shot before we get to phase five. When we get to phase five, again, it will feel very similar to life pre-COVID, except for one factor. And that is that the governor anticipates maintaining mask mandates in place until the CDC changes its guidance on the need for masks. So while they are indicating that once we get to that 50% metric, that we can move back to phase five, we can eliminate those capacity limits. There is likely to still be a mask mandate statewide and that will be in place. So the moral of the story is this was really good news to hear today. I should have mentioned, right now we're at 28% of those over the age of 16 who've been vaccinated statewide. Again, we're very much within reach of achieving the phase five reopening. I think folks do need to continue doing what they're doing, which is seeking out and getting those vaccines, continuing to wear masks, staying appropriately distant from one another and, and keeping it up. We are moving in the right direction. This is exciting news for our business community. It's exciting news for our residents. It is something that in light of all this, we will be sitting down and with our community partners and talking about community events this summer. We did obviously talk about that a bit with the board and unfortunately, the time has passed for us to be able to have fireworks on the Fourth of July. And we're not sure that we'd be at that metric quite yet at that point anyway. But we are looking at an opportunity to reschedule those fireworks into the future at some point. We are, we're looking at some other opportunities and I'll be prepared to report back to you on that next month. But just some really good news, we're really pleased that given the, the governor's announcements today that we have this senior only event next week. It just helps if, if we're, if we're seeking to get to that 70% number and we're at 58% now. Every 1,1100 individuals over the age of 65 who can get vaccinated are, are going to help us with that. So again, good news, I think, for once. I, I feel like I haven't been able to give a lot of good news COVID related in my managers' reports in the past, but I think we're moving in the right direction. We're really grateful for that overall. Any questions from anyone on, on that or on the governor's new restrictions, Barbara?
Just a quick one. My recollection is 16-year-olds can get Pfizer. Pfizer was tested on them, but not Moderna. And I don't know about Johnson &amp; Johnson. Am I right? Are there limitations on 16-year-olds?
There are, I think. I, I don't know them off the top of my head. We can find that information and I believe we have it on, on the website. One of the things I should have mentioned, I apologize that I didn't, is that along with those announcements today, the governor did also make it known that the state is going to, starting April 12th, allow anyone in any phase over the age of 16 to begin to be vaccinated. The, the question that we've gotten is how is that possible? Everyone's been talking about vaccine not being available. I think that generally is starting to improve. Just last week, the state got 800,000 doses. They're expecting to start getting up to a million doses per, I believe it's per month. But that, that flow of vaccine is starting to, to kick up. And trustee Miller will look into that, the question about whether individuals at age 16 are, are able to, to get certain of the vaccines or not. We have, by the way, I should have mentioned, we don't have any control for any of the events that we've been hosting over which vaccine is made available. We are given what we're given. And so we've, we've produced, or we've provided both the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines at our events. We have not had the Johnson &amp; Johnson yet. That's really being handled by Cook County and the state. And they, they've been using those at, at specific locations, but Cook County is, they could, you may recall, Cook County has been limiting who they've been allowing to receive the vaccine to really phases one A and one B. They're expanding that to one B plus, starting on Monday. That will expand to one C, we think, before April 12th. And then at April 12th, it's likely that the entire state will begin to accept anyone in any phase.
Thank you. Yeah, I still know a lot of seniors who are struggling to find a vaccine.
Well, I hope they are able to, to get one from us. And I'm also, as I said, hopeful that we're going to be able to continue those events. We have been to have conversations with our pod. We're, we're nearing the end of, of the need for teachers and municipal employees to be vaccinated. We're, we're, we're getting through those numbers. So we're starting to talk through how we can continue this effort with other groups in, in our communities, including other frontline workers, grocery store employees, restaurant employees, things like that. So we're, we're trying to come up with other ways to get that vaccine where it needs to be.
Okay, wonderful. Thanks.
Okay, just two more items for you. And I, I do apologize, that was a lot of information. But again, I'm, I'm a little jazzed about it. So I did want to be able to share all of it. Trustee Mulvaney started to refer to a couple of the events that are upcoming, but there actually are a lot as we enter spring and everyone starts thinking about spring cleaning. I think it's worthy to note that there are one, two, three, four, five, six events that kind of relate to that overall. The first one is coming up on Saturday this week. The Chicago Furniture Bank is sponsoring a kitchenware collection event, as I said, on Saturday, March 20th. That takes place from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at our Southeast commuter lot. That is where kitchen utensils supplies can be donated and they are used to help individuals who are transitioning to living on their own, to stock their kitchens and to have utensils, dishes, pots, pans, small appliances available. It's really a great opportunity and I'm, I'm thrilled we're able to partner with the Chicago Furniture Bank on that. Lake Shore Recycling Systems, LRS, begins curbside yard waste and food scrap collection on Wednesday, April 7th. And that will continue every Wednesday until December 15th. The third annual, this is what trustee Mulvaney was referencing, the third annual donate and recycle drop-off event is coming up on Saturday, May 15th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, again at the Southeast commuter lot. For those items that don't get donated to either this coming Saturday's event or to the donate and recycle event, we will have our annual spring cleanup day on Saturday, May 22nd. We'll collect items, LRS will collect items at the curb throughout Glencoe throughout that day. But I just underscore what trustee Mulvaney's point was. Please, if they are, if, if what you're putting at the curb has useful life left in it, please consider bringing it to that donate and recycle day. Or look to one of the many donation opportunities that we do have listed on the village's website, Goodwill and others. There are many, many worthy causes out there that will come and, and collect those from your house, from you. And we don't want to see them go to the landfill if they don't need to. I'm excited to say for the first time since 2007, there will be a household hazardous waste collection. That's coming up on June 12th from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, again in that Southeast commuter parking lot. This is in partnership with the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County. And it is open to all Illinois residents. All, one thing that is new this year is that those who wish to participate must reserve an appointment time. That information will all be available on the village's website. And as we get closer to that date, which is still about three months out, we'll get that info out. And then there will be a document destruction and electronics recycling event the following week on Saturday, June 18th, from nine to noon, again in our standby Southeast parking lot. All of this information is going to be shared in the upcoming edition of Inside Glencoe, which is coming out in, in the next week or so to all mailboxes in town. We'll have it on our website. We'll also be sharing it through We'll have it on our website. We'll also be sharing it through E-News and our social media platforms as always. Um, last thing I wanted to report out on is that the vehicle license, uh we're, we're upon the vehicle license renewal process. All of those materials are being mailed out to Glencoe Household tomorrow. And so they should start uh showing up in people's mailboxes next week. Um, you can certainly update information, renew all of that using the village's website. It's all contactless. Um, don't need to come to Village Hall to do it, although you can if you so choose, or you may drop your renewals into the white mailbox on Village Court outside of Village Hall. Um, as a reminder, those stickers need to be uh displayed in your windshields by May first. Um, and any renewals received after April thirtieth will incur a fifty dollar late fee. Um, we are celebrating our downtown business community with this year's vehicle license and encouraging people to shop local. Um, so it'll be a good reminder uh to see that sticker while in reverse on your windshield um every time you drive into downtown to uh enjoy a meal or uh purchase your groceries or um something special for your spouse, um like I had to do when I forgot my wife's birthday. So um with that, I have no further items, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. Thank you.
Okay, if no questions, our next item of business is consideration of an extension of the village president's declaration of emergency. As you all recall, the current declaration is set to expire at the adjournment of tonight's meeting. It is recommended that the declaration is expiration be extended to uh our next meeting. So I would request a motion to approve the extension until the adjournment of the next regular, special or emergency meeting of the Board of Trustees. So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
I, I should note, President Levin, and I'll make this point later. Uh, at the expiration of your term, we will probably look to, uh our, our advice will be if the pandemic continues to exist and a emergency continues to exist, to have the new village president enter a new order, um which would then need to be extended by the village board. We're operating right now on an order that was entered one year ago this uh very month, unfortunately.
I, I was very hopeful to be a short term order, but it wasn't. And I think that's terrific. I can get recycled, just like all the other stuff in there. Uh, okay. Our next regular meeting of the village board is scheduled for Thursday, April fifteenth uh twenty twenty one, so you can pay your taxes and attend the meeting. The uh next order of business is our consent agenda. Uh, since uh this is a virtual meeting, for clarity purposes, I'm going to ask Phil Corrally to read the titles of the items that are on the consent agenda, so that we all remember what we're about to vote on. Bill, could you read that, please?
Certainly, President Levin, thank you. Uh, the first item is seven A, February twenty twenty one, Village Treasurers Report and Golf Club, a Glencoe Golf Club financial report. Item B, February twenty twenty one, check register for the village of Glencoe and Glencoe Golf Club. Item C, ratification of the February twenty twenty one early check register list. Item D, consideration of a change order to the twenty twenty Water Main Improvement Contract and Supplemental Appropriation Ordinance and corresponding budget amendment for calendar year twenty twenty one, beginning January one, twenty twenty one, and ending December thirty one, twenty twenty one. Item E, consideration of an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year twenty twenty to pay the principal of an interest on general obligation bonds, Waterworks System Alternate, Alternate Revenue Source Series twenty twenty of the village of Glencoe, Cook County, Illinois. Item F, consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a one year contract extension with Deutsch Contractors of Incorporated of Zion, Illinois for excavation spoils removal and snow hauling for a total cost not to exceed twenty nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Item G, consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract extension with Chicagoland Paving of Lake Zurich, Illinois for the twenty twenty one asphalt street patching program for a total cost not to exceed forty thousand dollars. Item H, consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a one year contract extension with A One Contractors Incorporated of Wheeling, Illinois for downtown sidewalk brick paver restoration improvements for a cost not to exceed one hundred twenty thousand dollars. Item I, consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract extension with Malu Landscaping of Wheeling, Illinois for supplemental landscape maintenance services for the twenty twenty one season for a cost not to exceed forty two thousand dollars. Item J, consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with Graff Tree Care Incorporated, DBA Great Lakes Urban Forestry Management of Batavia, Illinois to complete a comprehensive public tree inventory and an update of the master tree plan for a total cost not to exceed thirty four thousand two hundred and seventy five dollars. And finally, item K, consideration of a resolution approving and making available for release certain closed session minutes of the village of Glencoe Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Um, I'm sorry, before we um move to approve, I had one quick question, I'm sorry.
Sure, Pete.
Uh, the, the sidewalk uh pavers, I'm just curious, roughly, what percentage of our sidewalks um get, get, you know, up restored for the hundred and twenty K?
I'm going to let Public Works Director Mao answer that question.
Certainly, good evening. Uh, we are, this is year, as noted, year four of the five year program. Uh, and, and we're projecting with the unit costs, completing about fourteen thousand square feet of the, of our total of seventy seven thousand square feet. We're anticipating uh one year remaining, we're on track for our uh our five year plan to get through that whole downtown area. And uh, and that's been accomplished as well um with uh some additional work done as part of the Tudor Court improvements, as well as uh ComEd ended up doing some of this work for us as, as part of a condition of a permit they had, if you recall, last year over uh, over on the West End of Park Avenue.
This here's, uh, this is about eighteen percent of the uh overall sidewalk in the downtown.
Yeah, sure. So it's five year plan. So we have one year to go on this um, on this item. And, and it's separately bid each year?
We have bid it uh twice and had, and had uh provisions in those contracts for extension. We've had the same contractor been the low bid of the two times we've bid it and they're um, they've, they've got an extremely efficient process down. And um, you know, we, we supply the, the additional pavers because there's a percentage of the pavers that get replaced. But just as a reminder to the board, this was, these sidewalk pavers went in in, in the years two thousand one and two thousand two at the onset of the street improvement program and they've, they've worn very well. And uh, and, and this uh, this type of restoration effort, we feel is more efficient way to bring uh, bring the sidewalk, restore the, those papers back up to grade. We're able to ma- ma- maintain and reuse ninety plus percent of the pavers. And it just uh, it's one of the benefits of that modular paver system that we don't uh, we're not just removing and replacing concrete or, you know, the board, some of the board may recall, prior to the street, streetscape improvements, we had, we had an exposed aggregate sidewalk system in the downtown and it was problematic for any kind of restoration and repair and utility work.
Good, thank you, David. And, and it might, I wonder if at some point we should look at extending that program if there are um additional benefits, you know, where the pavers are as opposed to our traditional non-modular concrete blocks.
Certainly, there, there are certainly some areas that lead into the downtown that have been on our radar that might be a good uh, an application of that, so absolutely.
Thank you. That's all, President Levin. Thank you, David.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Thank you. Our next uh order of regular business is consideration of an ordinance amending the comprehensive fee and fine schedule to increase the number of class B three liquor licenses for retail sale of alcoholic liquor for incidental on premises consumption. Uh, Jordan, could you explain that to us, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Levin, and good evening again, trustees. Um, as President Levin said, for your consideration this evening is an ordinance that um amends our fee and fine schedule to create a B three liquor license. So a B three liquor license is specifically for a municipally owned and operated golf course or golf club. So in this instance, the Glencoe Golf Club is the only eligible place that would uh have a B three license. So as you may recall from our prior, prior liquor license increases, uh, the, the village board must take action to actually create a license because once a license expires, it goes away. So as trustee Hallwax had indicated earlier in our meeting, the Glencoe Golf Course is in the process of um, or has a new um caterer, um our food and beverage provider à la carte. And uh it is staff's recommendation that um because they, the golf club did not renew its contract with its prior vendor and that liquor license went away, that the board um authorize uh the village president to grant a liquor license once um all of those conditions are met. The typical process includes a liquor license and business license application, completion of a successful background check and a, a meeting with uh President Levin in his capacity as the local liquor control commissioner. What's slightly unique in this situation is that um some of those requirements have not been met as of the tonight's meeting. But because um in owing to the, the expedited timeframe and the opening of a golf course, wanting to support uh the golf club's um ability to serve um food and beverages to our, our residents and members of the community, we're recommending that the board authorize the, the village president um to issue that license once all application requirements are met. So at any time, um if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those um, uh right now.
Joe, uh, do you have any questions or additions you, to make to uh what Jordan said?
Uh, nothing more than it's a great way to help get our, our caterer or, or vendor up and running quickly.
Thank you. Gail, any questions or thoughts?
No, thank you.
Barbara?
Well, I'm happy.
Okay, Peter, any questions or thoughts?
No, sir.
Gary?
No, thank you.
Jonathan?
Nope.
I figured Jonathan would be happy for us to get the revenues, so I knew he would. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Thank you. The next order of business is consideration of an ordinance amending section eight, three oh two of the Glencoe zoning code related to multiple cooking arrangements in a single family dwelling. Uh, Taylor, do you uh wanna give us some background on that?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here quickly. Is that visible? Everyone see that?
Yep, we can.
So um, just as some background, this has come before the board uh now on, on several occasions dating back um to uh August of last year, when it came initially to the committee of the whole. Um, and um, single family dwellings are currently prohibited from having more than one cooking arrangement, which is um how the uh, how the zoning code describes a kitchen as a cooking arrangement um per dwelling unit. And that is from the definition of single family dwelling in the zoning code, which currently reads, "A detached dwelling having accommodations for and normally occupied by one family with one cooking arrangement." And um currently, this is enforced by village staff at the time of permitting. If we see a building permit with more than one kitchen in it, in a single family home, um, we won't approve that building permit. Um, as um you may remember from um previous discussions on the topic, uh, we've had multiple inquiries from uh residents, um from builders um for various reasons, um including increase in multi-generational living arrangements, um some religious dietary restrictions. Uh, we've had several of these, these requests to um, to reconsider this as part of our code and to allow multiple kitchens in a single family home. So um, this was originally referred to the zoning commission by the village board in September of last year. The zoning commission had a public hearing in November of last year um on the subject um and considered the uh, the sub, the had um continuing discussions into um December of last year, uh where they considered two questions that the uh, that you as a board um sent to them. First was whether the zoning code's current prohibition of multiple cooking arrangements in single family dwellings remains in the best interest of the health, safety and welfare of the public. The zoning commission unanimously agreed that this restriction should be lifted um and that the word normally should be deleted from the definition of single family dwelling. So they would now read a detached dwelling having accommodations for and occupied by one family only. Um, normally would be, the word normally would be deleted to strengthen that prohibition or strengthen restriction of that, the use of that dwelling to, to one family. And um the deletion of the cooking arrangement, um part of that definition would uh remove that restriction. The second question that they considered was, if the uh restriction on multiple cooking arrangements were lifted, would there be any additional restrictions that would be needed um to maintain the purpose of the code? The zoning commission did not reach a consensus on this question and they sent it back to you for further discussion. And uh, two months ago, at the January twenty first committee of the whole, um we had further discussion on this, at which point staff was directed to prepare an ordinance removing the prohibition of multiple cooking arrangements without additional restrictions on location. And that uh proposed language is shown there on your screen. It's identical to that which was recommended by the zoning commission. Um, in consultation with the uh village attorney's office, we determined that um this would be under our, using our definition of family, which you can see here, it's, it's quite lengthy, but using our definition of family, we would still maintain the ability to restrict the use of a single family dwelling to a single family per this definition. So we would no longer be restricting um kitchens, multiple kitchens at the time of permitting. It would, it would become more of a code enforcement issue, um where if um there was um a living arrangement that did not meet the definition of a single family, we would with this um proposed amendment still have the ability to uh use our code enforcement powers to um enforce the zoning code. Um, we did have discussions about potentially amending this uh definition of family, but um in, in consultation with the village attorney's office, we um feel that it is, it's an acceptable definition for use at this time. It may be something we want to revisit in the future, but that's not um currently proposed. Um, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Got a question. Um, I've, I've got a question. Um, did, um, I thought that we had talked about it, maybe it just, it's just a step too much farther away. Um, but the possibility that, uh, for instance, in, in us, in uh paragraph two, two groups of persons, where all persons in each group are related uh by blood, something like that. Say, um, say a couple has gotten older and they want to have another couple come and be caretakers. Um, that is, that is all fine, that, that works here with the exception that they then have to pretend that they share common meals rather than, you know, they really, they really don't. Um, did we talk about that? What was our intention there or is that just for a? What was our intention there, or is that just for another, a discussion for another time?
To the best of my recollection, that was, that was not part of the discussion in amending this ordinance. It is something that we'd be happy to look into, further amendments to the family definition. That is something that we had some preliminary discussions about. It was not something the zoning commission considered in any detail. Trustee.
Yes, yes, please.
It's, it's one of the many nuances in the definition of family, and this could take us down a major rabbit hole in discussion. The goal was to address this one issue. Yours is a very valid point. I've dealt with these very issues in other communities, and when the village is ready, we should have a very deep and engaged conversation on it.
Okay.
For that, we wanted to get this done so that we could have two kitchens. I think it would be well to schedule in the future a Committee of the Whole meeting where the Steve people could go through with this, an in-depth discussion of all the nuances of what it would take to reform that definition further.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think just the way that, you know, that people are living these days and in an effort to be more, you know, empty nester friendly, things like that might be worth looking into.
Yes, I would agree, Barbara.
Thank you.
Gail, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Joe, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Peter, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Gary, any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Jonathan?
No, thanks.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Rusty Hallwax.
Yes.
Rusty Listener.
Yes.
Rusty Miller.
Yes.
Rusty Mulvaney.
Yes.
Rusty Rubin.
Yes.
Rusty Vry.
Yes.
Okay, does anyone have any other businesses they would like to bring before the board? All right. Ifna? Jordan, were there any emails received during the meeting that we should have read?
President Levin, no, we did not receive any public comment.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion for us to adjourn into, adjourn, excuse me, into closed session for the purpose of discussing the following under Illinois Open Meetings Act, Section 2C2, collective bargaining, and Section 2C6, consideration of sale or lease of village property.
So moved.
Do I hear? Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Rusty Hallwax.
Yes.
Rusty Listener.
Yes.
Rusty Miller.
Yes.
Rusty Mulvaney.
Yes.
Rusty Rubin.
Yes.
Rusty Vry.
Yes.
All right. Do you all have the link that Steve has provided us so we can leave this meeting and go into the other link?
Sure. Everyone in a minute.
Okay.
Hello Jordan. Jordan, can you hear me? Hello. Hello. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
I had it plugged in the wrong thing, my apologies.
No problem. I sort of figured, oh, I'm in isolation here.
No, no, I was here, I was trying.
Excellent. Well, I'm back to our open meeting with instructions to explain that the board voted to close the closed session and return to open session, and instructed me to tell the people involved in the open session that we have, that they have adjourned the open session and that the meeting is now concluded.
Right, thank you very much Larry. It is 9:17 PM. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you Jordan, and for all your help on all this.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Bye.
Bye bye, goodnight.